Okay, we will call it an order. The Oak Island Town Council Public Hearings in Regular Meeting of June 9th, 2015. The council will enter into its invocation led by Councilor Medlin, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just want to come to you to thank you for this day. Thank you for the very air that we breathe, for our health and our strength, and for the ability to carry on and do the things that we have to do. Help us to never be mindful that every ounce of life that we have in us is a gift from you. It's also a privilege, we would thank you for tonight, to serve you and to serve our fellow man. I pray for guidance and wisdom and clarity tonight for us as we deliberate and deal with the important issues of this town. We've been placed in a heavy place, dealing with matters that affect so many people's lives. So we need your wisdom, and we need understanding. We ask for it tonight. Lord, we pray for those who are out there tonight in harm's way, protecting us, so that we can have the freedom to be here and do what we're doing. We ask you to protect them. We thank you for them, and that your mercy and your grace would shine upon them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Medlin.
Nicely done, sir.
Yes, very nicely done. Very nicely. First thing this evening, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is to receive comments on the proposed fiscal 2015-16 budget. We have nobody that has signed up to speak?
Yes, the one public hearing.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, Richard, you didn't put one or two. We have Richard Bunce.
That's right.
Well, you left it blank. You left it blank.
Richard Bunce, 125 Northeast 26th Street. The theme of my budget hearing comments is priorities and realities. First, let's review the now four years old, the four years of this council majority annual budgets stacked up against their campaign theme of smaller, fiscally conservative government. In fiscal year 2012, Town of Oak Island annual budget, the previous council majority approved net interfund transfer revenue and expenses of $30.8 million, with actual expenses of $29.6 million and actual revenue of roughly $22 million for the 2012 audit. Town of Oak Island annual budgets, review and expenses approved by this council majority were in fiscal year 2013, $28.6 million; 2014, $29.4 million; 2015, $30.2 million; and tonight, $29.9 million. I'm using the earlier interfund transfers, so that number may not be exactly right. Is that the promised smaller government still taking roughly $30 million from the residents and property owners each year? The Town Council has direct control of two significant revenue sources for the town: property tax rate and utility fees. The fiscal year 2012 property tax rate was 27.5 cents per hundred in valuation, and was unchanged in 2013, 2014, and 2015. The 2016 rate is adjusted due to a new valuation and is roughly 1.5 cents less than the inflated revenue neutral, inflated revenue neutral rate, but results in just 33,000 less property tax revenue than the current year. Also, the tax-based valuation shift from the beach strand to the woods will be interesting for voters this fall. The utility fee increases over this council majority's budgets were largely needed to meet the out-of-control expenses of the utility system over the last decade. The monthly fees have grown roughly 35 percent for the water base and water sewage usage rates, to 45 percent for the wastewater base rate, and to over 400 percent for the sewer treatment fee. Budgeted utility revenue in fiscal year 2016 is $2.8 million higher than fiscal year 2012 budget, and $9.4 million higher than fiscal year 2012 actuals. The serious problem with these increases is that they are across-the-board increases, exacerbating a very flawed utility rate structure the council has repeatedly refused to change. That the town's business systems could not support a change is nonsense, as it supported several changes requested by the previous council and their manager just fine. At last week's budget workshop, there was a long discussion about what was said by town officials to be their top priority: the beach, and specifically, beach nourishment. There was even talk of a property tax rate increase to raise approximately $3 million per year to build the beach fund to pay for an engineered beach re-nourishment project with a $45 million project cost. Well, there is talk, and there is action. In this roughly $30 million annual budget, roughly $300,000 is allocated to the beach tax fund. That's roughly 1 percent of the total, and roughly 2 percent of the discretionary portion of the budget. That does not sound like a top priority to me. Surely, there is $3 million of lower priority items to be eliminated from this budget to fund the stated top priority item, beach nourishment, no new revenue required. Well, there should be priorities, and in an ideal world, beach nourishment might be a top priority. We do not live in the real world. The reality is that federal, state, and county funding will be insignificant for such a project into the foreseeable future. Perhaps offshore wind farm and oil gas exploration revenues will nourish the beach sand. There is also the real threat of significant sea level rise in the coming decades, and the sand-deficit nature of large stretches of our beach renders nourishment a very short-term and very expensive fix to a long-term issue. Strategic retreat, surrendering what cannot be protected and focusing on what can be protected or worked around, is likely to be a higher-value strategy. If the state keeps its hardened structure banned, there will always be a beach where the land and ocean meet, just perhaps north of where it is now. I am not sure how many of Mr. Middleton's working men and their families are left in the oceanside community he envisioned for them 60 years ago. It is fewer than last year, and this budget again guarantees it'll be fewer next year. The Town of Oak Island is destined to become just another exclusive oceanside resort, and it is sad how unnecessary it all will have been in the headlong rush for progress over what was imperfectly fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Richard is the only one that has signed up to speak on the budget. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Please.
It says Southport, but it's Oak Island. I just want to thank council, this council and other councils, over the years for supporting Community Watch. I realize that the budget has come to the point where that's no longer can financially support us, but I know you'll support us in the sense of the word. So we do appreciate that. I've talked to some of the people, and they want me to let you know that they appreciate what you've done for as long as you could. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie.
They requested anything?
Charlie, I'm sorry. Be sure next year we didn't get an outside agency funding request from Community Watch. I'm sure the council would have considered.
Well, they told me that, never mind.
Get with David. Get with David Hatten.
My mistake.
Yeah, on the process. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please. And I'd just like to make one note. Whether you agree with him or not, I believe Richard Bunce has spoken at every budget hearing since, as far as I can back as I can remember, 2005, 2004, 2003. Every single budget hearing, he has spoken. So I appreciate that kind of involvement from people in town, whether I agree with them or not. If there's no one else that would like to speak, Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Madam Mayor?
Please.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilor Painter, second, by Councilor Scott. All those in favor, please. And it is unanimous. And I believe we will be dealing with this in our new business section tonight, in case there's no action. Second public hearing, and I'm not going to read this whole thing, is to receive citizens' comments on proposed language that will bring Oak Island's ordinance definition and building height measurement in line with the NC State Building Code definition, which reads as follows in the agenda. We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak on this tonight. First is Betty Hopp.
My name is Betty Hopp. I live at 7916 East Shaw Drive, and I was not aware that this was going to be, because I don't find out what was going to. My remarks might not be to the point, but they, I just scribbled them down. Referring to the heights of building, the first thing is that fill dirt should not be allowed. It's not good for the properties next door, on either side. The second, our laws can be more restrictive than the state laws. They cannot be less restrictive, and there were two people who, when I asked them that at that morning meeting that Josh Cook had, where KAMA and the Corps of Engineers were here to give what could be said, they both, two of them, said that our laws can be more restrictive than the state's, but it cannot be less restrictive. So what I want to say is that we should keep to our laws that we have, the 41 height where it's legal, and the 35-foot height, don't allow fill dirt, so it messes up the lots next to them, and keep our laws, because they're more restrictive than the state's. And thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next is Mary Brewer.
Mary in Brewer, 3524 East Pelican Drive. Thank you. Mine is short and sweet. I think the idea of measuring height with a tape measure is abhorrent to me. I mean, it just is. Now, I read some stuff yesterday that said the average cost of having an engineer do the height was $500, and I say that's part of getting a building permit. The idea that we're trying to enforce a height restriction, and we're not using scientific method of figuring out that height, is just ridiculous to me. I mean, everybody in this town knows that we've got some buildings that are overheight, and it's just, you know, it's going to get worse unless we are able to get this done by the proper method. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Next is Lynn McDonald, please.
Hello, I'm Lynn McDonald, 6407 Tortoiseshell Court. My impression of this debate about the definition was that it was spurred by a concern with tall houses being constructed, and I certainly share that concern. But changing to a definition that is very hard to understand and implement does not seem to me to be a smart way to address that issue, unless there is some reason we have to be consistent with the state. If the issue is really people being creative in finding ways to make houses higher, then I think we should directly address that issue. If it's a fill dirt issue, I understand that this new language attempts to deal with that, but if you're going to set a six-foot zone around the house, then somebody will go to eight feet around with fill dirt. And I just don't think that this will solve the issue of the housing height, and I would urge council to look at other avenues. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. All those who have signed up to speak on this public hearing, please. No, your digital comments, okay. Anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing, please? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilor Medlin.
Can we just get to the top?
Yes. We're going to take action. You close the public hearing, then you discuss the, okay. Motion by Councilor Medlin. I have a second. By Councilor Scott. All those in favor, please. And it is unanimous. Okay. Council may take action to amend the definition of building height measurement. I figure you'd want to say something. Since you asked, go for it.
Okay. I attended the planning board meeting, at which the planning board took no action to bring a revised definition of building height to the council, as we directed them to do. And I wanted to give some reason, the reason why. And it mainly had to do with the fact that they were, they had a concern that if we went to the state definition of building height, that that might effectively raise the allowable height limit. And they were hoping for, well, we were looking for a ruling or a legal opinion from Mr. Eads on that.
On the height?
On whether, if we move to the state definition of building height. Because the, in the state definition, you know, when I was, when we were talking about measurement at the four corners versus at a box drawn six feet out from the house, the lowest point of that box, to, to kind of...
State code language?
That would be the state code language for the lower limit. But the upper limit would be the, in our definition, the upper limit is to the highest point of the structure. The state building code states the average height. So if we move to the state building code definition, you know, the question was, would that act effectively lower the height of the building, a building, and thereby give the builders some extra height that they could build to when you measure to the average rather than to the highest point?
I don't know that I can answer that question exactly the way you asked it, but I will answer it this way. I think if you're going off an average, you certainly run the risk of exceeding the maximum height, because an average is an average, which I think implicit in that is that there will be areas that are higher than the maximum. So if you go off the average, then, does that answer your question, Ms. Painter?
Yes, yes. And, and, well, and then the extension of that would be, are we prohibited from doing that because of our height, the requirement for a referendum if we change the building height?
Well, I don't know that we're changing the height. We're, we're, I think we're okay, because you're allowing up to that height. You see what I'm saying?
No.
Well, if you say that height's a maximum regardless of whether, you know, if it's only one square inch, I don't know, a pipe or something is up to that height, and y'all can help me on this.
Peak.
A peak. Whereas the average would be two feet lower, you're still allowing up to that height. It's just that we're not taking from an average, we're taking a maximum height. Does that make sense?
Well...
I don't, if the height, if you're not changing the height, you're not changing the height.
Okay, but if, if the highest point of the structure is at, say, it's at 41 and a half feet.
Right.
But when you take the average height of the structure, the average height, it becomes 40, it still sits at 41, then have we, does that building exceed the building, the allowable building height, or does it not?
Well, that would be, I mean, it depends on what's adopted. I mean, if it's, if you go with an average, then obviously it wouldn't. If you go with a maximum, whatever point it is, then it would.
So if we went with the North Carolina State Building Code, which is the average...
You would have portions that would exceed the height, but I think you would be within the referendum, because you're just adopting the state building code's measurement of height. Does that answer your question?
Our height restrictions in the VE zone are 41 feet.
Right.
There's just no question.
We're not trying to change the referendum height. What you're trying to change is how the height is measured.
Yes. And we're not trying, we, I didn't think we could, I thought we were prohibited from changing the referendum height.
No, we got it, but we can change how it's measured.
Yes.
And if you get the average, and if our current, if it's, if it's this tall, and you got 41 feet, but you take the average, it's this tall, it's 41 feet, it's, it actually is allowing a taller building than it would allow if we went by our current code, which states the highest point on the footprint of the property. So we could, what they would be doing, in effect, is raising in some instances where they would measure the height from. And our current ordinance, it could allow as much as another foot or two above what our current ordinance allows.
Well, I think that the public policy, or the theory behind the average is, is that if you go by the average, the vast majority, you're going to be compliant with the height limit. I mean, and it, you know, because, you know, it's a dynamic thing, building a house, and it's, you know, it's not, you're not building it in a, in a, you know, a...
But if you've got a peaked roof?
Right. Right.
Which a lot of, most of them do.
Yeah.
So the average of that is not going to be, I mean, the peak is clearly going to...
There's no question that'll be higher than the number. There's no question. Or could be. I mean...
Could be, if it was pushing the limit anyway.
Right, right. No question.
So does that, is that allowable under our restrictions?
Well, I don't believe that the referendum is indexed to a maximum point or an average, it just has a height number. So I think we're within our purview to go either way.
Okay, okay. All right.
And I'm not saying that's 100 percent certain. I mean, you know, the courts these days especially are pro-development and pro-property rights.
Okay, well, let's, let's just, we, thank you. So that helps. The other discussion that was, that took place at the planning board was, as Ms. McDowell pointed out, that if we make, draw a box six feet out and around the house, and start the, make the lower measurement from the lowest point of that box, then if a developer wanted to use fill to raise, you know, give them more height, they could just put the fill out to eight feet out from the house. So it, you know, what I'm saying is that it seems like, it seems that the planning board concluded that the way to address this would be to address the fill instead of the height, the way the building height is measured.
Can I ask this question?
Sure.
If they were to go in, when they map out where the house is going to sit, before they bring any fill dirt in, come out six foot from the corner of the house, that would be their mark where they take the height of the house. They can bring in all the fill dirt they want to, but that mark's still there at the lowest point, before any fill dirt comes in.
Is that doable?
Yeah, Mr. Eads, is that a, when do we, when do we measure?
Where everybody maps out their house.
Where the, where the height limits start? As Council, can we set it so that it's measured before fill is brought in? The lot as existed?
I'm not aware of any state mandate that would prohibit us from adopting such an ordinance. My only question would be, from a practical standpoint, is that, is that doable in the real world?
Steve, come to...
Yes, the real world, but the way our ordinance is written right now, the measures from the finished grade. So as long as we measure from the finished grade, fill is not restricted as to...
Right. So we would have to amend the ordinance?
Correct.
I mean, as long as everyone understands that that's the route, that's the end result you want, then there's more tweaking of our code that would be required.
That's a, that's a good point.
So what is what you're suggesting, that we still modify the building height definition?
To the original lot level, six foot out from the plotted corner of the house, front corner of the house. You're coming to, before they bring any fill dirt in, your level's there, and they can measure any, 41 feet, they can put as much fill dirt as they want in there, but that 41 feet's still too, in that lowest point.
I think that would help tremendously, because if the owner wanted to bring in fill dirt after that, then they're reducing the height of their home from the fill dirt And we have had one or two cases where they, where they brought in two feet of fill, and all of a sudden, the building is 43 feet higher than what it would have been if they hadn't brought in the fill.
What Jeff's suggestion is already being done in the town of St. James.
It is being done in town of St. James?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
They're already doing it there.
Do you know how their ordinance reads?
I don't know how their ordinance reads. I know that when you submit a set of plans, you have to give the actual elevation. You also have to give the elevation where your drain tile's going to be, and you cannot exceed 18 inches from finished floor to finished grade. There's all kinds of ways you can do this. You can be more restrictive in your ordinance. What you can't be is contrary to a state law. And contrary in Black's Law Dictionary is a wholly different term. So yes, you can be more restrictive. But we need to address fill and not height. Fill has always been the issue with erosion, with stormwater, with all kinds of problems with, that's been our issue. It's not the height. We have not seen a house, unless Steve Edwards can tell me where one is, that has exceeded our height limit. We have not allowed it. If they get close, they don't even get, they don't even get to put the shingles on it before. We make them get a surveyor, measure it.
When they go by our current town ordinance?
Correct.
Which in some cases has allowed them to bring in fill dirt?
Correct.
And then the height of the house ends up being...
Artificially changed.
Artificially changed.
But as our current ordinance states now, which is what we're trying to address, which is the fill, it's not the height. You still don't want your height to go over 41 feet, but if you limit the number of fill like they do in Castle Beach, to one foot above the crown of the road, or whatever you guys choose to do, or whatever Mr. Holloman and I and Steve can come up with that's to submit to the planning board, if we address the fill issue, we get this issue handled.
Well, I mean, I know we were talking about a modification to the fill ordinance that would perhaps do the same thing, but what Ms. Counselor Winkoff has suggested is the changing the building height ordinance, so that the lower limit of the height is measured before any fill dirt is added.
But for me, it's a compounding issue. The issue of fill dirt is not just height. It's, as I said, stormwater.
Well, we can change.
We, if we, if we address, we still need to do, we still need to address fill, and we always have.
Yeah.
We can off, very simply, adjust how we measure height. We can do it from whatever elevation you choose, from the road, from a planter box, they used to do it all different ways. Right? But however you do it, it's going to have a practical application of can myself, a building inspector, Chad, Steve, anybody go out there and actually do the measurement? At this point in time, we can. You change it to where it has to have an additional surveyor. I mean, we've just changed it to where the surveys used to cost 700, now they're almost $1,500. With all the policy changes we've made, we're adding the cost to the builders as it is. If that's what you guys want to do, then that's what we'll do. I mean, planning board just could not come back with something to do with height until we address what they believed, and this is not my opinion, and I'm not a member of planning board, but twice, they came back, we need to address the fill. Now, we can do what Mr. Winkoff did, and I think that's the simplest, simplest way of doing it. Just got to figure out how to write the language, and I can do that.
Well, there, there are some fallacies in that. Where is the free board measured from?
The free board is one foot above the base flood elevation. So if your ground elevation is already, let's say you're in a VE 17 foot, that means you've got to have B17 feet above base flood to the bottom of the horizontal member. So that one foot gets added to that, so now you have to be 18 feet above the horizontal member.
Okay.
But ground elevation, if it's 10 feet, then you only got to elevate up eight feet.
Okay, here's my point. And I can take and show you a lot that falls into this category. A lot was just cleared this past week, and I happened to be by there when they were shooting their grates. And I asked them to shoot a grade from the crown of the road to the house side. Okay? It was three feet lower at the house. Okay, it was three feet lower at the house site than it was at the crown of the road. Where's all that storm water going to go? It's going to go under that house, it's going to go in that lot. So, if you, if you hold the height restriction on that lot, and then they come in there and fill up enough to get the, the, the storm water to drain to the side street, then they're not going to have the free board that they've got to have unless they go twenty feet up in the air. So, I think we're creating some problems here that are unnecessary. It, it seems to me that, it, and I'll agree with whoever said that, this is not a height issue. I mean, a house can only be the height of the pylons plus the house on top of it. If your, if your pylons are eighteen feet tall or sixteen feet tall, it's a simple matter to figure the height of the house, and you can tell exactly how, how the house is going to be, it's a fill issue. And if we, we've got a lot of lots on this island, and if you ride around, you'll see them that are low, that have been built around, and they're going to act like a saucer if something isn't done to keep the water off of them. So, I think we're creating a lot of problems here that are going to come back and bite us later.
Well, there was, there was one other point that planning board brought up as well, and that was, and I, I have a, a family example, but I'll get to that. If, if you limit fill to whatever number you decide to limit it to, there are some lots on this land, on this island, you can go to my mom's house, we had to raise the front corner of her house site six inches, she'd never have to play flood insurance.
Well, we could get into that discussion about the limiting of the fill, but if we could stick to just the height measurement right now. So...
Take no action, leave the ordinance as it exists for the town, and just don't take any action on this, and then give the planning board instructions to bring back amendments as far as...
Fill.
Fill?
Well, I think we've gave them objections to bring us something back, and they refused to take it up.
Well, it wasn't that they refused, they had some reasons why they didn't change it. They, they decided that the issue was fill and not the height measurement.
From reading the minutes in the book, I think the, the planning board basically said, leave the ordinance as it is, and, and allow the fill where it's applicable, and but, but hold it to a maximum of one foot above the crown of the street, is that not what they said?
Yes, some, I don't know the exact words, and I know it's in the pack, packet, but Mr. Edwards suggested that we use what his town, Caswell Beach, uses, or something similar to that, which is, I believe, Caswell Beach is just two foot above the crown of the road.
One foot.
One foot, we thought at the time it was two foot above the crown of the road, but it's actually two foot, I mean, one foot. So, yes, they did suggest something like that, but that's not what they were charged with doing. They were charged with, planning board was charged with doing something with height, and twice, they said they didn't, they didn't think height was the issue.
Their preference was, according to what's in the minutes, to leave it alone.
Yes, that is correct.
And, and counsel could direct the planning board to come back at the next meeting with some amendments to the ordinance to address the issue of the maximum fill, correct?
Pardon me?
Correct, I mean, is that...
Yeah, that's what you can do, I mean, if that's what you tell us to do, that's what we'll do.
Well, sis...
Clarification, and this is probably going to sound silly, and I'm certainly not a builder. If the lot itself's already two feet above the crown of the road, does that prohibit any additional fill? I mean, I think that might need to be addressed.
It depends on how you write the ordinance.
That's a good point, too.
I was going to say, you got, you know...
Lots aren't in boxes, and they don't have all the...
Right, I bet, what I'm saying is, if you say it, I, I would, I would want to make it clear to a, a builder, if it's going to be up to a maximum of one foot above the crown, if you already have that one foot, you don't get to put another foot of fill on top of that because...
Correct, and nor do you have to take it down to one.
Right, sure.
All you have to do is word it that the fill, the finished grade of the house site could not be more than twelve inches above the crown of the road.
Well, just my thoughts, since we got into the discussion of fill, my thought on that would be, if they do add fill, that the height would be measured from, well, I would, I suggested the addition to the, to the Caswell Beach town ordinance to that, to state that when the fill, when fill greater than six inches, that was per Mr. Edwards' suggestion, because, well, we talk, I don't want to get into the details, but when fill greater than six inches is added to a lot, the finished height of the structure shall be limited by the applicable town height limit less the height of the fill added. That would be...
That's what Jeff said.
Well, okay, so what you were just, you were just dealing with the height definition, and we may need to deal with both definitions. So, so in the case of, of the example that Counselor Medlin gave us, we're saying that the builder is obviously going to add fill to, but, but it just limits the finished height of his house.
You know, you can ride all over this island after a heavy rain, and there are houses everywhere that have ten, twelve, fourteen inches of water under them because they weren't ready, the, the grade wasn't raised up enough to get rid of the storm water. So, if you do what we're talking about doing, you're just going to create more of those, exactly what you're going to do.
No, we're just saying that they, they're going, they're going to add the fill anyway, it's just telling them...
You're saying in your motion, though, to...
Raise above the road bed.
You've got to be able to raise it up enough to get the storm water to drain to the storm, to the storm.
Yes, but there, but...
It might take, it might take three feet of fill.
Yes, but nevertheless, the, their building height is limited by the lower limit, by the, the, the ground measurement before the fill was added.
And that was my understanding, you were talking about limiting it to no more than like six inches above the crown of the road. So, if they had to do four feet, the fill...
Well, we haven't put that into the building height definition at all, that had to do with the fill definition.
See, then you get into, if you, if you're in the flood zone, the BE zone, you get into the free board, and, and you, then, then you're, then you're affecting your free board with the amount of fill you put in there.
All it's doing is limiting the height that they can build the house. It's limiting.
Brian, could the council adopt tonight language stating that the, and get you to suggest some language? That it would be measured from the, from the original?
I, I think, I mean, I, I believe the notice, and Lisa, by all means chime in, is probably broad enough, but it seems to me that if we're, if we're going to zero in on fill, and particularly if it's indexed back to the crown of the street, I, I would be more comfortable, because this is going to be a hot button issue. More comfortable if it was brought back and advertised as such. At least, if you disagree, I...
No, I don't disagree, I was, I was just going to suggest that you could defer action on the, on the public hearing item, ask for recommendations from planning board on fill, have the public hearing for that next month, and then you'd have both topics still open for discussion.
And you also could ask for planning board recommendation, or you could direct the attorney to work with staff to come up with the ordinance and not have it go back to planning board if this, it's up to you.
Brian, we're not talking about fill, we're just talking about where the house is measured from.
Right, well, if that's what, you can do that tonight, because that's within the, the notice. I, I must have missed, I thought, thought we had started moving towards looking at the foot above the crown.
Well, I think we got into that discussion because we, it's a related discussion, and I think what we probably concluded is that we need a, an adjustment to the fill ordinance as well. But we can't do that tonight.
Right.
We, we, we recognize that.
Y'all are the bosses, y'all can talk about whatever you want to, just...
I can do what you want.
I don't want you to pass something about fill tonight. Right.
So, we could either measure from finished grade or original grade, we could change that ordinance.
Okay.
So, the council needs to make a motion that we defer action?
Unless you want to deal with the measuring height issue that's before you tonight, you can do that.
Pardon?
You can deal with the measuring, excuse me, the measuring height issue that's before you tonight, because that was advertised for.
Okay.
And then if you want to handle fill separately, you can do that as well.
Handle fill on the next meeting, okay. You want to make a motion about where to measure height?
I'll make a motion to adjust our ordinance to measure the height of a house from its original lot level before any fill is brought in.
What does original lot level mean to you guys?
Four foot out from the corner of the front of the house.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make sure, as plotted.
If, if, original lot level is completely, is, is a, it's different, I mean, we've got lots that are six foot below the road, we've got lots that are six foot above the road, I mean, how do you address that with the original lot level? You've got to bring in fill to keep all the storm water from the neighbor, I mean, we've got them now.
We're not talking about fill.
Yeah, the average, we, you've got to step it down as you go downhill.
Could you do it from the crown of the street? The grade, that grade, I mean, is that easier, because that's objective...
No, that's fine, too.
Moves with the slope of the land.
That's fine.
Well, but I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm confused.
That's where you come in with the average grade, you know, the, the six feet out parameter thing, that's going to be difficult. If, if you want to restrict houses being measured prior to fill, then you need to do the average grade at the four corners of the lot instead of finished grade of the average four corners of the lot, the existing average grade prior to development.
And then... I'm not trying to make this any more sticky than it already is, but what if it is a, what if it is a bowl lot? I mean...
Then, you, you know, you're...
I just, in fairness to those people that might have that, I think, I think something, a benchmark like the crown of the road or the average crown of the road, measured by the lot frontage.
Well, one thing that's going to happen, if you do average adjacent grade prior to any fill, they can put as much fill as they want to, but if it's prior to that, they might wind up with a thirty-six maximum height on their house because it's measured from before fill, so, there is two separate issues. If you want to allow field of storm rain, you can still do that, but if you change it to adjacent grade without fill, then that would define it, and it just limits the size of the house that way. You might wind up having a thirty-two foot house because you've got nine feet of fill.
You, you've got, you've got to address both, I think, the level of the road and your adjacent property owner. I mean, I'm not, the height, to me, is still not the issue. If you want to measure it from the bottom of that bowl, fine, limit them to a one-story house, that's not the issue. There's multiple issues that have to be addressed, and that is, if you're going down a hill and you take one foot above the crown of the road, and this lot's four foot below this one, will they go one foot, one foot? And as you go down, it puts a nice plane down that road, and all the storm water ends up in the ditch on yacht as opposed to in the third house in the middle of the block's yard.
Well, obviously, they, they, obviously, they still have to comply with storm water and all that business, and we may have to address the fill ordinance, and I think we will. But let me hear what our town manager said again, please.
Basically, if you limit the, or measure the height from original grade at the four corners as average adjacent grade, that's how the definition needs to be stated, and then, like I say, we can handle fill later on storm water, so just do that for the height definition.
Okay, now, so, at the four corners of the lot...
That's correct, because that takes into the adjacent lot, along either side of that lot, and that's where you...
Remove finished grade and put average adjacent grade.
Average adjacent, original grade.
Or originally, you're removing where it says finished grade, which is brought in artificially.
So moved, yeah.
So, if it is a bowl lot...
You're still going to your average of your...
You've still got the, the four corners.
But if it's a bowl...
And then bring in some dirt later.
Right.
Then...
We're not addressing fill.
I realize that.
They would be allowed forty-one feet from each corner.
Okay, okay, I'm seeing it, I'm seeing it.
It's actually allowed higher that way.
We're still talking forty-one feet at the corner of the structure?
Mm-hmm.
Are you talking about forty-one feet at the corners of the lot or of the structure?
The structure.
Corner.
Corner of the lot.
I thought we were saying corner, the average adjacent grade is finished by the corner of the lots.
Yes.
The lot, right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right now, we, we do it by the structure.
What's in our definition right now is average finished grade at the four corners of the structure.
Right.
What we're saying is average existing grade of the land, the lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and then, if it happens to be a bowl lot, and then they have to bring in fill to make it level, then...
That's not going to make a difference.
It's not going to make a difference at all.
If it's a bowl, if this lot's lower than this side of this lot...
Okay, all right, all right.
Madam Mayor, I would like to just make a recommendation that we still get the wording right and come back next month and approve the final wording, just to make sure we're all...
That's fine.
So, if you don't mind, just thirty days.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
You can make a motion to instruct staff to prepare the wording and then approve it then, I would feel a little bit...
Yeah.
More comfortable, so we have the exact wording.
Okay.
I don't want you to have to carry...
I would say in my motion.
A motion to defer action on this public hearing tonight and direct staff to bring back wording at the next council meeting for defining...
Defining the average of a...
Finding the measurement of height.
We're doing this in height, not fill.
In height.
Because if we go to fill, it has to go back to planning board.
Right, no, it's height.
Doing it in height.
Yep.
If, if we want to address fill, we need to set up a public hearing for it.
Up in a separate public hearing.
Fill, fills, fill is addressed, planning board, and then back to you guys.
Yep.
So, and...
This issue stays alive.
Yep.
We're not doing fill.
However, are we, let's vote on this motion first, and then I don't want to, then I'll add something.
Okay.
Motion to defer?
So moved by Counselor Wyankoff, second, second by Counselor Painter, any further discussion? All those in favor, please, and it is unanimous now.
Now, secondly, I would like to direct the planning board to bring us back a definition of fill that effectively will limit the height of the structure to the allowable town height limit less the amount of fill added.
Yeah?
Maybe working from the, from the Caswell Beach definition, which, I mean, I know they were, that was the starting point. I mean...
That a motion?
Yes, I would make that a motion.
Second by Counselor Wyankoff, anybody got any suggestions on that? Okay, the planning board will meet before the next council meeting, correct? Okay, yeah, okay. No further discussion, all those in favor, please, and it is unanimous, okay.
Wait, one more thing, because I didn't, I should have put in my motion, sorry, that, to also direct the town clerk to advertise for another public hearing on this subject for, of the subject of height, and then also fill for our next...
Depending on the wording that staff will provide, I don't know that you're going to need to re-advertise for height.
That's right.
We'll, we'll...
We're done with height.
You said that.
Okay.
Yeah, so just be fill, and I will consider myself directing.
Okay, direct the clerk to advertise as usual, okay.
Do I, so...
That it?
Okay.
Hey, good, forty-five minutes on two public hearings. Okay, next, council reports. Counselor Kaiser, please.
No report.
No report, Counselor Scott, no report, Counselor Medlin?
No, no report.
No? Well, y'all don't do anything, what's got a page for?
Imagine that.
Imagine that. I want to thank all the volunteers last week and the week before. They, we had about twenty to thirty people that went out down to the West End, and then last week went out to Twenty-Ninth West and Tenth East and planted sea oats. I was told by George that they planted between nine thousand and ten thousand sea oat plants out, and that helps keep the erosion down. Our town staff grew those sea oats, we didn't have to buy them. They grew them from, went and harvested what we've already got. So, congratulations to them for being able to do that, and thank you to all the volunteers that did it. Triathlon, the bridge to Pier Triathlon was this past Saturday, Ed Harper's already told me they're going to do a major report in the pilot tomorrow about it. I did find out that every year, they donate to some of our nonprofit groups, the ones that help them out, and I found out they always donate to the Marlin Swim Team for their scholarship fund, and this year, we had the Boy Scouts, and we also have these, had the St. James presenting the colors, and there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ten states represented from the athletes, Michigan, Wisconsin, Illinois, so major success. Want to say again, July the second through the sixth, the Warrior Ride has managed, and the Patriot Guard has managed to bring the Traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall. It's going to be set up, it's too big to set up here where the, where we call the soccer fields. It's going to be set up over on the east side in the ball fields, and it is an exact one-fifth replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall in Washington. On June the second at two-thirty... On June the second at two-thirty, they're gonna have the opening ceremony for day one. Uh, and Mr. Holloman, did Bob get in touch with you about the Twenty-One Gun Salute? Okay, they're gonna have a Twenty-One Gun Salute, and they're gonna have two replican- replica cannons out there. They're going to have representatives from every branch of the service. So, come out there on July second and see this. Um, Council Medlin always prays for our troops and those that help keep us our freedom. This is a great opportunity for us to do that. Um, they're tearing down Unit Five of the Preserve. I'm still gonna find the time to go out there and take some beach chairs and some sandwiches and some tea and have a picnic and just watch. Uh, they say they'll be through with that and the tearing down in about two weeks. It'll take them about four weeks to get everything carted off. So, it's finally being done.
Starts when?
They, they've already started, two days ago. Yeah, it'll take them about two weeks. They've got bulldozers and stuff out there. Um, everybody remember, uh, every year, July first is Oak Island's Beach Day. Uh, it's always a major success. It starts at eight AM in the morning, and it culminates about nine PM with their fireworks. There are flyers over there on the table that have the whole schedule for Beach Day. Uh, congratulations to Southport. If they had had Oak Island as if for us to vote for, we would've won it. But Coastal Living, uh, had the list, and people nominated the happiest seaside town. And in Coastal Living, uh, Southport was, uh, named America's happiest seaside town. Uh, July fourteenth at the Rec Center, uh, Donna Michaux is going to once again do her, um, Turtle Talk. So, that is great. She is so good with that. She's accustomed to doing it with kids, and she's so animated and wonderful with it. Uh, it will be, I think, at two PM? Yeah, check that time at the Rec Center. Um, one more thing, safewise.com did a list of the two thousand fifteen safest cities in North Carolina. They did the top fifty safest cities. We were fifty, but we made the list. So, that's pretty good. Uh, Bowling Spring Lakes was rated seventeenth. Um, others in our area were Leland at thirty-one, Burglau at thirty-six, and we were fiftieth. So, congratulations to them on that. And I think I covered everything. That's my report. Y'all just don't coach stuff. I like going to those things. Uh, next is presentations, proclamations, and recognitions. Um, we have a introduction of the new employees. Mr. Holloman, do you have new employees to introduce, or Sarah, please?
Um, actually, our new employee had a personal emergency and couldn't make it tonight, but they will be here next month.
Introduce next month.
We will have, um, three new employees to introduce next month. Our new part-time meter reader, we have a new maintenance worker, and our new greenskeeper.
Okay.
They'll all be here, the two, will start, and they'll be here next month. And the one that was supposed to be here unfortunately couldn't make it.
Yeah, good, okay. And will you still be here then? Okay, um, next is adjustment and approval of the agenda with council's, uh, consensus. I would like to add an application for the Beach Preservation Board for a term expiring in September twenty fifteen. Is that correct, Lisa?
It is correct. It's an unexpired term.
Pardon?
It's an unexpired term.
It's an unexpired term, and it is by Les Reich. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. It's R-A-I-H-C-H. Also, I would like to move New Business Four, which is discussion of the approval or authorization of refinancing the wastewater bonds to immediately before the consent agenda. Does anyone else have any adjustments, please? If not, uh, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Council Painter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Kaiser. All those in favor, please, and it is unanimous. Um, next, we have public comments. Um, this is where you can make comments on anything you please. Um, items on the agenda or other issues we'd like to discuss. You have five minutes, uh, to make your comments when you come to the podium. Uh, please state your name and address for the clerk to add to the record. Um, first to sign up tonight, Sylvia Beck.
Sylvia Beck, forty-eight, thirty-six Coastal Drive, Southport. Farmers Market. I still do not have my spaces back. My application continues to be denied. On Thursday of last week, I met with the town manager. I wanted to know why my application was denied, a reason. And I wanted to know who "we" is, and I asked for my spaces back. No answer was given for the denial of my application. "We" is the town. That's Rebecca, Tim, the town council, and the mayor. Now, we all know who "we" is. I asked for my spaces back. Tim responded with, "Will you return to the market in a different location?" I said, "No." He counter-offered with, "Will you return to the market in a different location this year if you get your same spaces back next year?" And I said, "Yes." However, new information has been brought to my attention regarding these vendor spaces. This year, the market is gov- is self-governed by a group of volunteers, vendors, who call themselves market ambassadors. They have the authority to say yea or nay and to assign vendor spaces. One of these ambassadors, Marge Bell, Mama's Secret, maker of body cream, and the only real competition to my Barefoot Beach Cream, has relocated herself into one of my spaces. Marge Bell, Mama's Secret, volunteer market ambassador, is now selling her cream in what was Barefoot Beach Cream's space. Now, stay with me, the plot thickens. I also sell Ed and Morgan Harper's photo art mugs, State Port Pilot. A photographer from Holden Beach who also sells photo art mugs has managed to get himself reassigned to one of my spaces. Direct competition to the State Port Pilot mugs. What better way to increase your profits and the bottom line than to eliminate your competition and occupy their space? The Farmers Market generates enough revenue to pay Parks and Rec staff to work during the early morning setup hours and to collect space fees. These three volunteer market ambassadors have a dog in the fight and therefore stand to gain financially from their volunteer services. Now, there's a little bit more to come. Rebecca and Parks and Rec staff are in constant communication with Morgan Harper at the State Port Pilot. They want their announcements about their activities and events published in the paper for free. And not only that, they expect the pilot to cover their events and publish them as features, complete with photographs, for free. You deny the sale of their mugs, give space to their competitors, but you expect free coverage of your events. Now, in the South, we seal deals in many different ways, with a nod of the head, a spoken word, handshake, breaking bread together, and dancing with the fella that brung you. What has happened to loyalty and dancing with the fella that brung you? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beck. Uh, next is, um, Helen Cashwell.
Helen Cashwell, thirty-four oh seven East Yacht. "You on the council have a fiduciary responsibility to explore and determine to the best of your ability and to make decisions that are best suited for this entire town and to not let others do so. The refunding of our sewer bonds is no small issue. Reading carefully the template of a contract that's in your packet leaves many unanswered questions. Number one, there should be a listing of all possible fees, commissions, expenses, and then any legal fees that will be charged to this exchange since in all essence it becomes part of our debt upfront. Lumping them into a statement of fees is not acceptable. I wanna know how they, how much they are and specifically what they are. The escrow agent is a huge issue. Who selects that agent since he or she cannot work for the town or the bank? How much will he or she be compensated? This could be a bookkeeping nightmare, both for the town and the agent. Since these bonds will be sel- sold in five thousand dollar amounts, the interest that has accrued at the time of the sale and the amount of the bonds that have been sold must then be deposited to the escrow at once. And when our debt service comes due, it is possible that we might not have enough money in that account to meet our debt service and have to come up with additional monies to meet that payment. There is surely no guarantee that the bonds will even be sold quickly or otherwise, and perhaps not in entirety, and what happens in that case? The LGC giving their approval does not relieve us of all of our debt. They are only saying that we can do this, but it's up to the council and the town administrator to ensure that it's a viable option. This isn't like refinancing your mortgage. If it were, you would have a definite black and white amount in front of you of what you would be paying each month until the end of that debt. That is surely not the case with this refinancing. I ask you at this table tonight, until you can provide us with all of the answers that we need, sometimes do it nothing is the best option, and certainly to do this in haste is wrong."
Thank you, Ms. Cashwell. Uh, next is Mary Brewer.
Mary Brewer, thirty-five, twenty, thirty, hmm, thirty-five, twenty-four, East Pelican Avenue, Drive, whatever. I wanna talk tonight about a concept that I call due process. I'm sure the business folks at, at the college have another name for it. During my working years, I was fortunate to work mainly for people who believed in due process. By this, I mean that if I was doing something my supervisor didn't like, I was called in and told what it was that I was doing that was unacceptable. That gave me two options. I could agree that my behavior could be improved and then improve it, or not agree with the evaluation and seek other employment before I was fired. It's real simple. Of course, I hope that the same process would occur when performance was outstanding. Now, I would expect this type of process to occur in this town whether I was employed by the town, a contract worker with the town, or like I am, a volunteer. It works. It eliminates a lot of hard feelings when managers are able to do this for their employees, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Uh, next is Malcolm Morrison. Malcolm, you realize you have five minutes for both subjects, right, and not five minutes each?
You asked me to bring something.
The Co-, yeah. The Coastal Federation.
Time starts, may I?
Yes.
Tell him time starts when you walk up there and give me your address. Go ahead and hand those out.
This is a brochure from the North Carolina Coastal Federation, who was instrumental in helping out the living shoreline, which was the Oyster Reef down by the park on the I C W.
About the, the, start your comments when you go to the podium. I'm glad you and I know each other so well.
I need to get this.
Go, let's, let's get your time in so we can let other people speak. This is important, but you have five minutes.
So, I'll come back to what I just passed out after I finish these other comments. I'm gonna address the beach consortium.
Name and address.
Malcolm Morrison, one-one-nine Southwest Twenty-first Street.
Okay.
And on the agenda tonight, you're talking about the consortium. I think we need to have it in a formal way, and I think it needs to be led by the mayors of each of the beach towns. We need to be organized, to be a political force, to go to Raleigh to try to get funding for our beach, beach renourishment. It's been called a park. The beach is a park. It's a free park to everybody that comes down here. Uh, it's a county park. It's a regional park. It should be a state park, and with that, it should be a national park. I'll leave it at that. Now, what I wanted to talk to you about on our coast and Coastal Federation, they are trying to get money to, I want, yes, I want to support accurate, in-depth coverage of the offshore oil issue in North Carolina, the drilling offshore, to get good facts to you, to all, okay? And, uh, it says, "Our state faces one of the most important decisions in recent history, one with the potential to change the culture, economic, and environmental face of our coasts. Debate about offshore oil and gas drilling has erupted since it was announced that exploratory, exploration may be allowed along our continental shelf. In these early days, we are faced with many conflicting answers to potential concerns." And what they're proposing to do is to join in a group called the CRO, Coastal Review Online, to cover the important stories on oil drilling. And it's a mouthpiece, it is not a mouthpiece for the, of the Federation. To the contrary, the CRO, a member of the North Carolina Press Association, is dedicated to providing coverage that is as unbiased as possible. Uh, they're going to launch, uh, this program in a few months. They need some funding. Uh, over here on the table, there's copies of these brochures on our coast. We have a seafood establishment that sells seafood mentioned in it, and a brochure there that you could fill out and send them whatever amount you could spare to help get some more factual information out that's unbiased to the public. And I'll just leave it at that. Get all the shareholder, give all the shareholders in coastal communities a voice, outline the risks and opportunities for our coastal environment, tourism, and the economy. We're asking for your generosity because we believe you appreciate the power of information. Together, we can tell the full story of offshore oil for the benefit of our coast and the beloved state we call home. I'll leave it with that. That was the words of, uh, Mr. Todd Miller. He's the executive director of North Carolina Coastal Federation. So, they have supported us with the Oyster Reef, Living Shoreline. They're doing other projects here on Stormwater Runoff. And, uh, we should all, if we can, become members. And this is sep- a separate issue here. And on the handout there tells you where to send your cash or your check.
And a quick thing, their, their website is nccoast.org. Uh, that's all that has signed up to speak tonight at General Comments. Is anyone else that wishes to speak, please? All right, the next thing we're gonna go to is the discussion of the, um, possible bond issue. We've been in, that's gonna take a while, so let's take a quick break. We've been in session for an hour and ten minutes. Okay, well, we'll call the meeting back to order before we go into the discussion of the bonds. I did forget one thing on my mayor's report. Happy fifty-second anniversary to Council Medlin and his lovely wife, Frances.
Yeah.
That, yesterday, yeah. Okay, uh, we have our discussion of the possible, uh, twenty fifteen bond issues. Uh, we have with us tonight Robert Hobson, uh, from Wells Fargo Securities. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hobson and our finance officer, David Hatton, and our manager, Tim Holloman, to go through point A to point Z and help answer some of the questions. Robert Hobson, Wells Fargo Securities.
Some of you may know, we had a discussion last night about the proposed bond refunding. Some of you may know, we had a discussion last night about the proposed bond refunding, and I made it clear when we, when I first stepped up to speak last night that I'm not a bond refunding expert. I don't pretend to be one. And I was asked some questions that I couldn't answer, and I don't like, you know, for council or the public not to have an answer on an issue that I think is very important to the town. So at 7:30 this morning, I was calling saying, "I would like to have someone come down who is very knowledgeable in this subject to answer some of the concerns that council and the public has." And I have worked with Robert before, earlier on this bond refunding, and he graciously said he would drive down to Charlotte to help us out and answer any of your concerns and questions. So I'd like to, at this point, turn it over to Robert and let him help give you the expert answers.
Good, thank you. And I appreciate your getting in contact with him.
Great, thank you, David, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here this evening. Let me start by introducing myself a little bit more and to kind of give you a feeling for the role that our firm plays in this financing or proposed financing and what some of the other roles are, because it really is a team effort. Again, my name is Robert Hobson. I'm a managing director with Wells Fargo Securities, which is a part of Wells Fargo Bank in Charlotte. I've been in the municipal finance arena about 23 years, give or take. The first five years or so, I was actually a bond attorney, and then I switched over after about five years of doing that to the banking side, which I've been doing for about 17 or 18 years. Always worked in Charlotte, covering North Carolina and South Carolina, so a lot of experience in the state of North Carolina over the last 23 years or so. What the town has before it, as far as the refinancing, the town currently has three series or three issues of revenue bonds outstanding, some 2008 issued bonds, some from 2009, and some from 2011. What we're specifically talking about here is the 2009 bonds, and the simple reason why we're focusing in on them is that back in 2009, interest rates were higher than they are today, and they are actually higher than they were in '08 or '11. So this is the highest interest rate debt that the town has outstanding, so you might expect that that would be the most likely candidate to try to refinance, where you're trying to go from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate. Originally, when we started this process about two months or so ago, all three of the candidates were mixed. Since then, rates have gone up as far as what we can get in the market today, and the other two are not as healthy as the refinancing of the 2009 bonds. So the decision was made among the town and its financial advisor, and I'll get into all that later, to really focus on the 2009 bonds, which is where the town has the biggest opportunity to refinance and save some interest cost. Speaking of kind of the team, obviously, the town would be the issuer of the debt, just like it was in '08, '09, and '11. There's the local government commission that approves the debt. They're a part of the state treasurer's office. You have a bond attorney, which is Robinson Bradshaw &amp; Henson, a very well-regarded law firm out of Charlotte that's been around since the 1960s or so. You've got a financial advisor, which is Doug Carter at DEC Associates. And let me pause there because this is a kind of a key point. He, as the financial advisor, his firm as the financial advisor, has a fiduciary duty to you all as the town, as the issuer. So he is the person, his firm is the person sitting beside you all with a fiduciary duty to advise you and guide you through the process. My firm is actually the underwriter, and what we do is come in and work with the attorneys and with Doug Carter and his firm to put the bond issue together, put the prospectus together, but our main job is selling the bonds. So we come in at the beginning to make sure that they're packaged in such a way that we can sell them and everything is done the right way, but our main job is on the sale date to go out into the marketplace and sell the bonds, and for that, we make a commission to sell the bonds. So that's kind of a broad overview of the various parties. And like I said, we're the underwriter, but I think as far as you all are concerned, the two parties that are even more closely aligned with the town are really your attorney, who obviously has a duty to you all as an attorney, as well as your financial advisor. Getting into some of the specifics, and this is the part that when I make these types of presentations, it takes some listening to. I've always said what we do is not maybe the hardest thing in the world, but it's foreign to a lot of people. It's somewhat akin to refinancing a mortgage, but in other ways, it's not. So what we're proposing to do here, the town has the 2009 bonds that I just alluded to outstanding, and to give you some statistics on those to kind of frame the discussion, the average rate on those bonds, the average interest rate is just shy of 6%. For sake of argument, let's just say they're at 6%. And that's above where you can issue bonds today, roughly at 4% for sake of argument. So 6% is where the bonds currently are. Today's market, roughly 4%. So what we do is we come and we put together a refunding bond issue, and we issue enough bonds to take the money from those bonds, and I'll talk about how we sell those. We put it into an escrow account. The money sits there, in this case, until 2019, and we put enough money in there such that when it's invested in securities, they're AAA rated securities, it's self-funding. And so the town, once we, once the bond issue's done and the money's put into that escrow and we have a verification agent that, it's an outside CPA firm that actually verifies that the amount of money we put in there with the interest that it earns will pay off those bonds, you'll get an opinion from Robinson Bradshaw as your bond attorney, what we call a defeasance opinion, that given that calculation and given what the documents say, that once all that's done, those bonds are gone to the town. No more risk to those bonds, no more payments on those bonds. They're defeased or legally taken care of. And all of that takes place when we close this bond issue, which along the schedule that we've laid out would be in mid-July. So if everything goes to plan and the refunding bond issue takes place, we close it. At that point, the money goes into that escrow. It's held by, the town has selected U.S. Bank, which is a huge corporate trustee-type bank that's got thousands of these escrows' accounts outstanding. We give them that money pursuant to an escrow agreement. It's held in trust for the benefit of the town to pay off those bonds, and once all that is put in place, it's over as far as the town's concerned. And for example, the following year, when the town does its annual audit, either the audit will not mention them because they're no longer outstanding, or it will say in the prior, you know, in the audited year that we're dealing with, those bonds have been defeased. That's one thing that confuses people is they, because they're, they get confused by, "We're going to have two sets of bonds outstanding," or, "Are we going to have to pay on one and the other?" And the answer is no. We, you're going to pay on the new refunding bond issue moving forward. The escrow takes care of the other bonds, and you all have fully funded that after closing, so that is no longer part of the town's obligations. Let me pause there and see, and we can certainly get into the numbers more, but I think I've hit you with a lot of stuff. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
I guess it's still hard for me to understand. If we are going to issue new bonds that will say have, I think the coupon rate that we have been told was around 3.69, how is it that this escrow account, if we're going to issue those bonds at that coupon rate and buy government securities, which seems to me they're very low interest-bearing, and those go into the escrow, how is it that that can pay off the original bond, the original bonds which were at a higher interest rate?
Great question, and actually, the question we probably get the second most. What, and I'm just going to use rough numbers just for sake of an illustration. Let's say that there are 40 million, and these are all very close to the numbers, but I'm going to round them just to make it easier to understand. Let's say that there are $40 million worth of bonds that we're going to pay off, set up that escrow to pay off. It takes about 46 or 47 million dollars of money to go into that escrow to pay off those bonds, for the precise reason that you brought up, is that we can only invest it at very low rates. So we got to put, it's not only got to pay off the bonds in the future, it's also got to pay the interest semi-annually on those bonds. So we put 46 or 47 million dollars into that escrow account. It generates interest based on the little bit of interest earnings that come out of that account that we sync up to make the payments on the bonds semi-annually, and then the bonds all get paid off in 2019. So we're actually having to issue more bonds than we're paying off. And you're like, "Well, how can we save money if we're issuing more bonds than we're paying off?" Because we got to pay debt service on those new bonds. The answer is the difference between the 6% that I talked about earlier on the existing bonds and the roughly 4% in today's market is 2%. I mean, that's a pretty wide difference. So that wide difference more than makes up for the fact that we've got to put more money in that escrow than the amount of bonds that we have to pay off. It's all, it's the dynamics of it. There's no one single factor that you can point to, because you can't say, "Well, let's just look at what rates are today." Well, the flip side of that was, what are the rates on the bonds we're refinancing? The flip side of that is what kind of earnings can we get on the escrow? And that's where this computer program that we've worked and the industry standard, it takes all that into account, sets up the escrow, gets verified by the outside firm, and that's how the whole, the whole thing works. If we, if those bonds that we were refunding were at 6%, and today's interest rate environment were 5.5%, you couldn't save any money, because that half a percent difference is not enough to make up for the fact that we've got to put more money into that escrow than the amount of bonds that we're paying off.
So you used a round number of 40 million, but our bond, our 2009 series bonds were 47 million. And so...
We're only refinancing the, one second. We're only refinancing the 2009 bonds from 2020 to 2036. We're not refinancing the bonds maturing in June of '16, '17, '18, or '19. And the reason is, you never can save money refinancing bonds that are before the call date of the bonds, which is 2019 in our case. So we're refinancing the bonds after the call date. Those are the ones you can save money on, and we are not touching the 16, four maturities that are prior to that.
So the, but is that, those, are those bonds maturing in those earlier years defeased?
No, because they stay as they are right now. And that's not uncommon. I mean, that's, that's, because the tax laws don't allow you to refinance bonds that don't save money. And by definition, refinancing those bonds don't save money. So when we do these types of issues that we do, we, our firm does, other firms do, I would say off the top of my head, in the state of North Carolina, in this given year, there will probably be at least 30, if not 40 or 50 municipalities, water sewer districts, whatever, that do exactly what we're talking about here. And it's, it's been done that way for years and years, but hopefully that answered your question.
Well, it would just be helpful if we had some ballpark numbers. I understand that, you know, a number is going to change between now and, and the date when, you know, you actually make this happen. But...
As far as what the refinancing would, would mean to the town?
Yes. Well, I mean, I'm just talking about, okay, these amount of, this amount of bonds are, this, this many, this many millions of dollars in bonds will be defeased.
Right.
And we're anticipating that the escrow account will have to be this large, whatever that number is, to, to pay that off. And then we'll still have these other bonds up, you know, in how many millions?
Right.
And, and how, just how all that works in, with some numbers.
Great, no, okay.
But it, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that we can digest it tonight, even if you tell us, which I do want you to tell us, but then if you could...
Sure.
Give us something to look at.
Okay. And these, these numbers have been, you know, vetted through the process over the last eight weeks or so with, like Doug Carter's firm and the attorneys and all, and this issuance is all, and this is under state law, the local government commission, kind of the way this plays out is they have to approve the bond issue ahead of you all and ahead of us obviously selling the bond issue. That all took place on June 2nd. So that's in place. But here, here are your numbers.
Would you say again what's in place as of June 2nd?
The, the local government commission has already approved the issuance of these bonds. Just, that doesn't mean you have to issue them, but the sequence is, before you can actually issue them, they have to approve them as well as the town. And that step has already taken place per the schedule that we've been working on for about seven or eight weeks. As far as the numbers, and these are as of June the 4th, there would be right at 42 million of bonds issued. We would issue those, and here's going to be a new concept, but I want to make sure that we're consistent with what we're talking about. We issue those at a premium typically, and that's what these numbers assume. That means we sell them for more than 100 cents on the dollar. And that premium would be right at $4 million. So 42 million of bonds, 4 million of premium, gives you roughly $46 million. We also, back in 2009, the town funded a reserve fund out of its, out of cash to be there in case the town ever ran into trouble making the payments on those bonds. There was a pot of money set aside. The good news is that since that time, the town's finances on the utility side have improved, and such that on this new bond issue, we don't have to have that requirement. We're not going to have to borrow more money to set aside in that type of account. And in fact, what we have to do, once again, under the federal tax laws, is we have to actually use the money that you had set aside in 2009 and put it into this transaction, into that escrow, which means we don't have to borrow as much money as we otherwise would because, and I'll give you the numbers, that's about $2.5 million.
That we have in a reserve fund today?
As, it sits with your trustee, U.S. Bank, today, and at closing, we'll transfer it out of the reserve account that's currently there to the escrow account, and that means we don't have to borrow that extra 2.5 million to accomplish what we need to accomplish. So you've really got, and keep me to my numbers, 42 million of par, 4 million of premium, 2.5 million from the reserve fund that we just talked about, right? Okay. With that, and what is that all total?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, forty-eight million.
Forty-eight.
With, with that, we're going to buy 47.8 million dollars of, of those securities to put into the escrow. And then there's about $600,000 of the various costs that go into the transaction that will also, that that will pay for from, it's really sources of money, the par amount, the premium, and the reserve fund, and then the uses of the money to fund the escrow and to pay your various cost divisions.
Do you have anything that lists out, and none of this is exact until the date of the sale of the bond? But do you have a ballpark on what are the costs that we will be paying? And these are all the numbers of savings that we would have, how much is savings that we're looking forward to, and that is net of costs?
Yeah, all the...
Talk about those for a minute.
Great, and that's a good point. The savings numbers I'm about to reference include or are net of the various costs. Let me go ahead and give you the savings numbers, because that's the page I'm on right now. On a cash flow basis, if you looked at your, the current debt service on the 2009 bonds that we're refinancing, and you compared it what, to what the new debt service is going to be on the refunding bonds, and just added up one column and the other column, and then took the difference of them, on a cash flow basis, the town's going to save about $4.3 million. That's starting in 2016. That's starting in two thousand and sixteen, going through two thousand and thirty-six.
And I don't mean to interrupt you here, but this, the term of these new bonds would match the term of the current two thousand and nine bonds. We're not extending the term of our debt, okay?
Exactly, exactly. And that is a general requirement of the local government commission and quite frankly, a, a smart thing to do.
And you say, you say this four point three million dollars would be after cost, right?
Correct, exactly, exactly. And that four point three million, if you looked at the individual debt service in a given year of your old bonds versus your new bonds, on a, on a cash budgetary basis, it's going to be about two hundred and five thousand dollars less moving forward than it is today. So, four point three million aggregate, two hundred and five thousand per year for however many years it is from today to two thousand and thirty-six, roughly twenty years. What we typically do too, because, um, you know, the time value of money, in addition to quoting those kind of cash budgetary figures, which quite frankly, a lot of issuers focus on because when you do the budget, it's the actual number. It's not, uh, we also look at it on a present value basis where we say, yeah, you're going to get four point three million dollars going out over the next twenty years, but what does that mean to you today? What if we present valued it back at a certain factor, roughly three and a half percent? What does that mean in today's dollars? And that figure is right at three million dollars. So, four point three million dollars over the next twenty years, if you present value it back to current dollars, and, and what would you say that equates to today? That's right at three million dollars. Again, put that in perspective. You, you might say, well, you know, three million dollars, that's great. I mean, if you were refinancing a hundred million dollars of bonds and all you were saving was three million dollars, that might not be a very good bang for your buck. So, what, what I tend to focus on, and this is the way that the, uh, other professionals typically in, in the local government commission, is, is a percentage. And what we do there is, we look at, the numerator is that present value savings, which is the three million, divided into the par amount of the bonds that we're refunding, which is, uh, par amount of, uh, forty million, six hundred and ten thousand. So, if you divide thirty, three million into forty million, six, ten, that's about seven and a half percent. So, we say, in our, in our parlance, which is kind of unique to the municipal bond world, we say, your savings is seven and a half percent. To put that in perspective, the typical rule of thumb in North Carolina from the local government commission is, you've got to have at least three, three percent to make it worthwhile, um, to the, to the, to the town or to whoever the issuer is. I would say three or four percent is kind of a, a single in baseball terms. You know, four or five percent, a double, six, seven, eight percent, a triple. Anything over that, nine, certainly double digits, which we've seen over time, kind of a home run. The one thing I can't tell you tonight that I don't think anybody could is, when, when's going to be the best time to do this? The best time to do this might be in a month per the schedule that we're on. The best time to do this might be in two years if rates don't go up. But, but that's all prognostication. So, that's why we try to boil it down to, what are our hard savings, net of the cost, and how do we put that in perspective? And that's where you get to that percentage. So, seven and a half percent in, in my world is certainly a double, if not a triple. Um, I've seen, uh, you know, I've seen ten or eleven or twelve percent. I've seen issuers do it for three point oh-one percent because they needed that budgetary relief. But, um, hopefully that puts things in perspective.
So, I mean, you, you mentioned that between March, when you first came with this, um, booklet that you handed out to us, and now that the, the interest rates have already increased.
Correct.
Um, and I think that interest rates, you know, there's, there is an expectation, I believe, that, that interest rates are going to increase over the next couple of years. I mean, we don't know for sure how fast, but there's an expectation that sometime they're going to start going up. And it sounds like, at least in the bond market, they've already started going up.
Yes, and we were at historic lows, and we're still pretty close to them, but we're not as low as we were a month ago or two months ago, yes.
Okay, alright. From the time that we, I mean, I, I'm not sure that we're, at least from, speaking for myself, I'm not sure that I am ready. And I need to digest this, and I'm, I'm hoping that you'll give us some, those facts and figures on, you know, a handout. But if, if we delay this for a month, what, I mean, what's, what will that do to us?
Just the, the, the risk that when, if you decide to do it in a month, if it's then, again, higher than it is today, you would have, um, you would have, I guess in hindsight, wished that you would have done it a month prior.
Okay.
One other thing too, and...
Yeah.
The, the, the action that's before the board tonight is to adopt, make sure I get the right, um, the bond order. That in no way obligates you, you're, you're, you're not obligated to sell the bonds, which under our current schedule is scheduled for June eighteenth. You have right up till June eighteenth to tell my firm whether or not to sell those bonds. So, I guess a, a thought would be to, to keep the door open as far as staying along the current schedule would be to, 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 to have the action tonight, but you still have the ability to not go further and...
Is it June eighteenth or July eighteenth?
Uh, June eighteenth.
June eighteenth.
Well, we won't be meeting unless you call a special meeting prior to, you know...
Yeah, we're, 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 we started, um, the financing process in roughly early April. So, we've gotten, we've gotten the good ratings affirmed, we've gotten the bond insurance in hand. So, everything's kind of gone exactly according to plan, and we are literally scheduled, um, in about two or three days to mail the, the offering document or the perspective. And typically what you do is you have the, the, kind of the last formal action of the issuing body roughly a week or so before that. So, this is just kind of the typical time schedule, and we just happened to be, you know, two-thirds of the way through it, give or take.
So, what is in our packet has a lot of blanks.
Well, that's because, the main reason it has blanks is because the numbers that we were just talking about are not set in stone until, under that schedule I just said, June eighteenth. When we price or sell the bonds at the interest rates, that's when the numbers get locked up. That's when the various blanks get filled in. So, it is, it is typical at this point in time to approve the documents in substantially the form that they're currently in, uh, to be filled in on the advice of counsel, subject to the town manager, et cetera, et cetera, at a, at a point in time in the future. And that's just because of the chronology of how things play out. Because like I said, I mean, if y'all, I guess conceivably, um, if you wanted to meet on June eighteenth, you know, at one o'clock in the afternoon after we've wrapped everything up at twelve o'clock, then we, we could have all those blanks filled in, but that's just, um...
Could we meet like the morning of June eighteenth, and you would have a good idea of what's going to go into those blanks?
You, you've already, well, uh, I, I presume so, yeah. We certainly would, and that's what we would typically do with... We would update you all, and once again, we will, what we typically do, and let me just talk about the schedule. June eleventh, that prospectus goes out presumably to the investors. That allows us, under the securities laws, to start calling potential buyers. So, that was what we will immediately do on June eleventh, and we will roughly do that for a week until June eighteenth, which is the designated date on the local government commission calendar that, that we have to sell this bond issue. But once again, we're, we, we're not going to sell those bonds unless you all tell us to. And, and you all, and, and, and part of like, for example, the local government commission approval that we talked about that's already taken place, had certain parameters basically that you had to have at least three percent savings to do it. So, and, and the town can adopt whatever parameters it wants, but you're, you're not, you're not obligated to do anything until June eighteenth. If you, and, and you tell us to sell the bonds, and, and if that's what you tell us to do and we do it, that's when the deal is struck.
Can you give us the estimate of the costs for your firm? And then make a statement as to how competitive you believe those rates to be?
Yes, I can certainly speak to my costs specifically, and then I can speak to, well, I think David has some of the, the, the attorney's costs, which I've, I've seen because there's a, when, when you put together the local government commission application, in addition to all the other stuff that's in there, one of the exhibits to that or appendices to that is the actual cost of, of, of the issuance. Uh, from our perspective, um, let me make sure I get the right number. We are right at one-half of one percent, which equates, if, assuming that the bond issue is four hun- excuse me, forty-two million dollars, our cost would be two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Your fees.
Our, excuse me, our fees. And that is predominantly, some of that is to reimburse us for certain expenses that we incur. Like, we have actually an attorney that represents us to put together that perspective. So, just for rough numbers, let's say that of that two thirty, uh, uh, thirty thousand of it, give or take, is expenses. So, two hundred thousand is, is really sales, not really, it is, sales commission to sell the bonds. So, to sell roughly forty-two million dollars worth of bonds, we have a sales force in Charlotte and other places across the country. They go out and sell the bonds, and that commission for the total forty-two million adds up to right at two hundred thousand dollars.
And is there a range or, uh, of those percents in the mar- I mean, of other firms that are like your firm that would do this? I mean, is that a standard amount or is that...
Yeah, there, I think a range is the best way to put it.
Okay.
And there are several things that go into that, and, and I hate to keep harping on it, but, um, this is where your financial advisor, with that fiduciary duty, one of their main jobs is to make sure that the various fees being paid to various individuals, not just our firm, but the other ones, are in line with the norm. The second kind of check on that is the local government commission. Actually, at the end of each bond issue, we have to send them what the actual fees were from everybody involved. And they keep a record of that presumably so that if something ever were to come up that looked out of line, they would have, you know, past history. So, the, those two checks. But, but to answer your question more pointedly, from our side, um, i- it is typically a range. I would say that this is in kind of the middle of that range. Um, and, and there's really two things that go into that. One is, the main thing is kind of the credit quality of what we're selling. If what we're selling is a triple A, general obligation bond for the state of North Carolina, probably the easiest bond to sell with the least risk, we're typically not going to charge as much sales, or we would not charge as much sales commission because it's not as hard or risky to sell. Flip side of that, if we were selling a triple B bond for a startup utility, um, that's, you know, build it and they will come, then we would probably charge, instead of a half a percent, probably three-quarters of a percent. You all, with the good credit ratings, are kind of in that, in that middle range, and that's where I would say that our fee is in that middle range. The other thing that we, we look at somewhat is that the, the bigger the bond issue, scale-wise, typically the lower the fee would be. And that just kind of makes sense. I hate to say, it's not like a, it's, it's not a, not a discount for bigger, but, uh, part of, part of what we do is just fixed time and effort that we, i- if it's an eight million dollar issue or a forty million or a hundred million, we, we've got to kind of cover that. So, um, um, so hopefully that, that's helpful.
It is, um, you mentioned attorney's fees?
Yeah, and I don't have, um, I can...
Bond counsel, just so the public knows, that's, that's not the town attorney.
Yeah, that's, that's the professionals that come in, I think it was...
You wish.
I was going to say that.
They, their proposed fee is sixty-five thousand dollars, and then they have twenty-five hundred dollars of expenses in there. So, they quoted an, an all-in fee of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
So, that is roughly three hundred thousand?
Uh, uh, between, uh, correct.
So, and I thi- think in this booklet, I saw a number of six hundred eighty-five thousand as of...
Well, there's other, the, the, and I don't know if you have the, the numbers I've got have the cost of issuance at two hundred and fifty thousand. And this is all being refined, but it's, it's, it's bond counsel, roughly sixty-five, sixty-seven. Then you've got, uh, the local government commission charges twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. The rating agencies charge fees... The rating agencies charge fees, um, I don't have that in front of me, but, um, for a forty, they do it based on the size. I would say that they're in the twenties.
And I see the package has, that's when you're talking about doing all three series.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That was the fee for all three series.
Okay.
Oh, oh, yeah, maybe that's tr- that...
Okay.
I'm talking about just the oh-nine. And then David was just, I mean, so you've got the rating agency fees, which are roughly twenty-five thousand dollars a piece, and then you have DEC or Doug Carter's fee of four, forty-five thousand.
Hold on. Insurance, bond insurance?
Uh, bond insurance actually came in lower than we thought, um, and I won't bore you with the actual, uh, uh, if you would like me to, I will, but the calculation's got a, uh, but anyway, that came in at eighteen basis points, which equates to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. To take your ratings that you have right now on your own of the mid-double A, uh, S and P rates, the bond insured, excuse me, mid-single A, the bond insurer is a mid-double A. So, it's worthwhile to pay a bond insurer like you did in two thousand and nine, and in fact, it's the same one. Pay them some money upfront to get their, their ratings to sell your bonds with, and will more than save the hundred and thirty thousand dollars that, that insurance cost.
Do you anticipate having any trouble selling these bonds?
Um, no, we, well, let me say, markets are markets. So, some days, we're actually selling some bonds tomorrow that's, uh, for a client in South Carolina that's lining up to be a pretty good timing. Last week, if we would have been doing it for them, maybe not as good, the market wasn't very good. So, different market conditions make it harder or easier. The good thing is, this is a water and sewer bond, not as good as you can get, not as safe as you can get, with nice credit ratings and nice insurance. So, I would think that this would be a, a very successful bond issue. Uh, the other thing, and this is another thing that you're paying us for, um, is that I would say the typical transaction we, we, and let me say this delicately because I don't want you to take it the wrong way. We, on that, when we sell these bonds on June eighteenth, it's literally a two-hour window where we go out after a week of, of, of pushing it to buyers. Come one, come all, who wants these bonds from like nine-thirty in the morning to eleven-thirty? Let's say we have the forty-two million. It would not be abnormal, and in fact, and I'll tell you why, I think it would actually probably be good, is let's say we could only sell at that point thirty-five million. We had seven more that we couldn't sell, and maybe it's because somebody, whatever reason. We, what we would do is underwrite, that's where underwriter comes from. We would actually buy those and just hold them and sell them the next day or the next day. We would lock in the rate to you all, y'all are done. We take the risk that on those ones that were not sold, that we can sell them in the future. And if rates are different, higher or lower, depending on where they go, we might lose money on those, we might make money. And that's another reason why that, that sales commission, this is my humble opinion, you don't want that sales commission to be half of what maybe it would be because then, uh, most people would speculate that an underwriter would not be very incentivized to buy some of your bonds and hold them if they're, you know, making that much. Had one more thought, um... Excuse me, I, I had something...
Until it occurred, that's comforting.
Yeah. Oh, oh, no, no, and the reason, actually, uh, uh, we could sell them all very easily, just put a high rate on. But that's not what we do, and that's not what Doug Carter will let us do, and that's not what the local government commission. So, it's a, it's a, it's a art, not a science, but that's where, you know, hopefully you take comfort. You know, Wells Fargo been doing this for, uh, it's really the legacy Wachovia folks that, that are still now with Wa- Wa- uh, Wells Fargo. I'd say the average age on our desk, as far as experience, is fifteen to twenty years salesman, you know, pe- I mean, we, we've done this a lot, um, um, and so hopefully there's some, some... And so, hopefully, there's some, some comfort there.
How common is it for municipalities and counties and states and so forth to, to do something like this? Not just, I mean, the county just pre-funded their bonds, but those were, those were not like ours, with this ten-year window that we can't pre-fund.
Right.
This situation of, of selling the bonds to keep an escrow, to pre-fund the, to, until 2019, to pre-fund what we've got. How often does that happen? Is it usual, is it something very unique, or is it just every day?
It is, I would say it's very usual. I, and don't quote me on this, but just being around for years, I would ballpark that, I'd say seventy-five percent of bonds, give or take, are refinanced just like this within the first ten years. So, this is, I mean, if you take ten bond issues, seven or eight of them routinely would do exactly what you're doing. I would say the other two that didn't do it, I guess one reason they wouldn't do it is because interest rates were so high that they couldn't get away with it. I'd say of those other two that didn't do it within the first ten years, would ultimately do it prior to the bond issue paying out at its original maturity. I don't think I've ever seen a bond in twenty-something years that we issued a twenty mil- excuse me, a twenty-year or twenty-five-year bond that went the whole way without ever getting refinanced.
One thing you haven't mentioned is escrow fee. What's the fee for escrow?
Uh, it's roughly two or three thousand dollars. It's a, a very, well, I guess in my, it's, it's literally two or three thousand dollars to, to pay them, to basically hold that money, put into their computer system, that they've got the money, and the fact that every six months, they've got to pay something out of that escrow account to make the payments on the bonds. One thing that might kind of help you, the, the escrow agent, which is US Bank, is the same bank that is the trustee on all three of your series of bonds, and they, they go hand in hand. So, it's not like introducing a new party with some additional whatever. I mean, they, they're familiar with the, the bonds and the payment schedules and all, but it's, it's roughly two or three thousand dollars.
Is that over the life of the transaction?
No, no, it's, it's, I think we caught, it's upfront, I believe. Yeah, actually, it was seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, they quoted it annually, but it would be for four years. So, seven-fifty times four would be three thousand. Sometimes we just get them to quote it all upfront, or pay it over the-
Could you speak to the experience, the longevity, the reliability of US Bank as our trustees? Can we trust them to, you know, and they're not going to pull a Ponzi fund on us or something?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, they're one of the most highly rated banks in the country. They've been in the trust business, or the corporate trust business, I mean, as long as I, I've been around. There's really US Bank, the Bank of New York, Wells Fargo Bank does that. So, I've never heard anything other than they are just a good corporate trustee.
Does the LGC have to approve the trustee?
They, they approve the entire financing.
And so Doug, the Doug Carter group has been involved in this?
Oh, and that's, and I apologize, that's why some of these fees are not right on the tip of my tongue, or exa- because that, that's what Doug's been doing. That's really their, one of their main roles is the fiduciary, is to get the fees, look at them, negotiate them if need be, whatever. So, I, I frankly just see the tally, other than what our proposed fee was. And that's why I apologize, I don't have them all off the top of my head, because I just, it's not really my-
And they actually have a fiduciary responsibility to the town?
Correct.
And what they've done on reviewing this and giving you advice on it, okay. Has Bart Krebs been involved in all of it? Okay.
Very helpful. He, he was on our rating agency calls, and was the great in telling the story. And obviously, the story got, story got told well, because the rating, it went as well as we could have expected.
Counselor Scott, have you been in a, a meeting, a presentation with counsel, with Bart Krebs from Raftellus and Associates?
I don't think so.
We're, we're going to have to set up just an update meeting from them, so that Counselor Scott can meet Bart from Raftellus and just-
He was.
Yeah.
I think he came with, with Doug.
That's right, he was here with the guys that came on the original presentation. Okay, okay. You have met him, you just don't remember it. And Bart Krebs has been, and, and Raftellus has been the financial advisor on all of these bond and debt issues on this system since they began the planning of it in two thousand and three, or four? No, it might have been a little bit later than that, I think they might have hired them about two thousand and six or so. That, yeah. I'm looking at Helen, she was mayor in oh-four and oh-five. Did you work with Bart and Raftellus then? Okay, so it was, yeah, it was about two thousand and six, okay. So, they, they know our complete history, and they've updated every year on the projections going forward.
And, and I think somebody had alluded to earlier, but just to give you a feel, like I said, we, we started this process in basically early April, and there's been several, what we call working group meetings or conference calls, where the drafts of the various documents, what Bart was working on, the LGC's involved, Doug Carter's involved, where for a couple hours, give or take, we'll be on the phone or in a meeting, hashing things out, revised drafts. We do that two or three times, and then we do the rating presentations. So, it's, it's a very well-vetted, you know, experience.
When the presentation is done to the LGC and goes to committee, you always have a spreadsheet, a document of some sort, showing the process. Can you send to the council members a copy of what was presented to the LGC? And did this go to a committee meeting, or has it just went to their?
It gets vet, it's, it's called the LGC Agenda, and it's a spreadsheet.
Right.
And it's, and it's done with the help of our group by the staff of the Local Government Commission, and then they actually take it and present it to the commission, and the commission votes, yeah or not.
Can we get a copy of that that was presented?
We got it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, if you don't mind, you have it to the council members, I mean.
Sure.
Because that, it was so unique and interesting and educational, because they issued the 2011 bonds, a year after I became mayor, and a year after you came on council. I don't think you were the only other one that was there, but the process that they used going through the LGC, and we had to go through Benny then. But those bonds sold on the date of sale in an hour and a half. And we just, David was McAdams, was just on the phone constantly, a conference call. And that, they had, they had lower ratings then, now ratings have improved.
I have one question, so I can get my head wrapped around this. You said the average of the bond was six percent right now.
Five-point-eight-eight percent.
And today's market's somewhere around four?
Uh, three or whatever. Three-point-eight-five, given that.
You said that the two percent would make up the difference of selling the bonds, but then you said we have two-point-five million in reserve, which will pay off that. Do we still use that two percent, or is that two-point-five paying the difference?
Um, I think two different things. The, the percentage rates are the difference between the rates that we're paying off versus the rates that we can get in the market. That's basically two hu- two percent difference.
Right.
It's between six and four, and that's a pretty good spread, and that's why you've got these savings. A second thing that's helping the cause is that we have roughly that two-point-five billion of money from the existing reserve-
Right.
-that we can put into the transaction, and that's real money. That's, I mean, if we didn't have that, we'd have to issue more bonds, and so that's real money that comes in and helps.
So, that pays the difference of taking off that big percentage, you actually get more of that percentage using that two-point, two-point-five million?
Uh, in, in a sense, yes.
Okay.
In a sense, yes, yes. We do, just not to get too complicated, since you are using, I mean, you're using that two-and-a-half million that's yours to do something, namely pay it, so we factor that, it's kind of, we factor that in too. I mean, because if you had, if you had thirty million dollars sitting around and could throw it in here, we could save you a lot of money, but you'd have to use thirty million of your own money to do it. So, we factor that into all these figures we just talked about.
And of course, I mean, the attorney requested that we make sure that any document that the council approves be subject to review by the attorney, whether we approve it tonight or in a month.
Madam Mayor, we would need a stated that we have until the eighteenth to kind of, for lack of a better word, rescind or pull this back. I don't see that in the proposed ordinance.
Um, I, I-
I, I was going to ask you, I'm going to suggest that we add that, I don't-
Yeah, that's not, I mean, I think that's, I think it's inherent.
Right, but I just-
Because you, you don't, we're, we're not going to sell the bonds unless you tell us to, but I think that there could be some clarification.
Yeah, just this order says, basically, they've already made that decision categorically. So, I would, Madam Mayor, in addition to making it subject to final town attorney review, and although the bond counsel's very competent, I mean, those guys, that's what they do. I would add a section fourteen, or actually, I would make the existing section thirteen read something to the effect of the town council reserves its right to rescind or revoke this ordinance up to and through June eighteenth, is that right?
Um, or, or, that's just currently scheduled, but you might want to even give yourself, and I'm thinking out loud here, more- let's say that the market, right now, we're scheduled for June eighteenth, and everything's looking good for that. But let's say the, the, something drastic happens in the market, and that gets delayed.
Right, do you, well, I just don't want-
I think we said it however you want to.
I, I thought I understood you to say unless we tell you, we don't want to go forward, you're going forward.
Oh, no, well, I shouldn't, I didn't mean that.
And you may not have said that, I, so-
If, when, we're, we're preparing, or prepared to sell them on June eighteenth.
Right.
When and if y'all tell us to. We're, we're not going to do anything, believe me, until y'all, so I, I might have said that somewhat backwards. But, no, no, you, you're putting in place the ability to be able to sell them, but we're, for us to sell them, we're, we're not going to sell them until you give us another green light.
And us is, I mean, I need to get your, your legal name.
Uh, actually, the legal name is Wells Fargo Bank National Association.
And how are they referred to in this order, I'm sorry?
Uh, I believe S, S, we have a trade name, Wells Fargo Securities, but it should all be Wells Fargo Bank.
This is the proposed order right here. I'm Brian Eads, by the way.
Oh, nice to see you. Actually, underwriters, oh, here we go.
And Madam-
Madam Mayor, I think that the easiest way to do would be, uh, Wells Fargo Bank National Association shall not proceed until further notification by the town, or something like that. Does that satisfy you? I mean, I-
Oh, yeah, no, that, we're, we're not going to do it unless you tell us to anyway, so that, I think that's fine.
And I, I, I would word that something, notwithstanding the passage of this order, the underwriters and Wells, and/or Wells Fargo Bank National Association shall not proceed until further notice from the town to proceed.
Town administers, it was going to take another board action, or just, are you going to delegate that somehow?
Well, I mean, I think it would, you would want board action. I mean, that's up to you.
We could approve this tonight, but with the caveat that it's, it's approved subject to an action by the board to proceed.
Further action by the board.
Further action, you know, kind of the language and the basic, um, um, package.
I mean, it's essentially what you said anyway.
Well, but, and that, believe me, I, I, whatever the board wants to do, but given the timing of things, are y'all going to be able to get back?
They'll call a special meeting.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're used to that.
I mean, at this point, it would be, um, you know, nine, within nine days from now.
I mean, you could, could call for a special meeting tonight on the, on the seventeenth, if you wanted to, or the eighteenth. That'd be a non-issue at that point. I'm just saying, I would like-
If it's got the date as the eighteenth, I mean, we could meet the morning of the eighteenth until, and just say, no, don't sell them.
If you could give us a, a, a day or two of leeway, because we're not going to, we're not going to formally sell, start the sales process. I mean, you would, you would be hurting yourselves, I guess is what I'm saying, if, if you told us on the morning of the eighteenth, here's your, here's your second green light, you know.
Let, let me ask this, Madam Mayor, and maybe you want to poll.
Please.
Madam, let me ask this, maybe you want to poll the council, what, if anything, are we waiting on to say, go, if you were to pass this tonight, what, if anything, would you be waiting on, other than legal review, to go forward and instruct them to sell?
I, I think I can answer for council, if, if I'm wrong, let me know. It gives the council time to digest what we've heard tonight. All they've had is this document to read through. It gives them some time to kind of digest all that, and place it in the little places that it needs to go in this document, and review the LGC meeting presentation, so they can say, yeah, okay, now I'm comfortable.
How about the fifteenth, if they were-
Actually, I was about to, that, that would be-
That's a Monday?
Uh, June fifteenth is a Monday, it's, uh, next Monday, in fact.
Madam Mayor.
Please.
I have a meeting here on the sixteenth at four, am I right, Lisa? Can we do it on the sixteenth?
Is that going to give you?
Um, it's not ideal, because what we would not be able to do until after that, typically, we would get the green light now.
Yeah.
Subject to stopping us, or I keep saying that the wrong way, but you know what I mean.
There's no wrong way.
Madam Mayor, I think-
What we're not going to do is, we can't actively sell bonds that technically, or try to sell bonds that have yet to get the last approval, we just can't do that. So, the later you tell us, the closer to June eighteenth, the harder our job is.
Less marketing time, essentially, you have.
Madam Mayor.
Please.
Uh, I think, Robert, what you've been accustomed to, if the board approves it, then you would get with staff that day after that one o'clock and say, look, this is a good idea, let's go with it, or this is a bad idea, and let's not. And, but this, what the board is saying is, they want to actually have that say-so. But typically, it would be up to administration, and we would be advised, okay, well, guys, that's, we're going to pull back at this time. And so, what you're saying is, you want another meeting now, and typically, there is not another meeting.
That's correct, that, that, and they're-
You know, so it's discretion of the board, but I mean-
Well, like I said, I just don't think the council's had time to digest everything. I mean, it sounds very secure, it sounds very positive. Unless the council believes they have, have digested all this and want to give this all-
I'm going to speak for me, I can't speak for anybody else. I had a lot of questions when I came in here tonight, and every one of them have been answered. Every one of my questions have been answered, and I'm, I'm good, I'm ready to go. If we need to make the, to move tonight, he's not going to sell them anyhow. If we say move forward, come the eighteenth, he's still going, we're still going to have to say, continue this process, right?
Oh, no doubt, I mean, the last thing I'm going to do, or our firm is going to do, is, is sell, and Doug won't let us do that. The lo- I mean, that's the last thing that's going to happen.
I'd like, I'd like to say one thing here.
This order as written, it could happen, and I'm just, I'm not trying to be Negative Nelly here, but that's my job.
We could reword it tonight.
You just would say that they won't proceed until further notification, like that should be in the, on the table.
But, but further notification by action of council, or by financial advisors who-
You can delegate that to town manager, but you can't have meetings, you know, you can't have a quorum and discuss it, unless it's in here. In other words, if Jeff has a problem, and he wants to bounce it off one of you, that's fine. But if that's emailed to everybody, then that's a violation of open meeting law.
I understand. I don't, if, if, if we reword this tonight, to add in what you just said. But my, my concern is here now, I know there have been a lot of questions from, from people, me and some of the people in the audience, and is, would it be appropriate tonight for them to try to get their questions answered?
I think in my expedite thing, yes.
Council consensus that I ask if there's anyone in the public that has a question?
Uh, Mayor, I, I just have, if we can ask questions on this end, I have one question.
Sure, speak up.
And I guess either Dave or town manager, what, what would be the downside or potential downside of doing this?
Right now, I don't think there is potential downside now, as, as Counselor Medley mentioned. There was some questions coming into here, but I think the questions have been answered. there was some questions coming into here, but I think the questions have been answered, and the board directed the finance director and myself to confer with our experts that day and go ahead and decide to make that sale, I think we're comfortable. Uh, I think the longer we wait, we run the risk of only saving two and a half million, two million, or one and a half.
I mean, I was gonna suggest, if we can't do it Monday, maybe Friday, the previous, I mean, I know that's tight, but they need as much time as possible to market them, and that's in the town's best interest, as, as I understand it, I'm not a finance guy, but.
That, that was my question, too, and I, it's answered.
A question that I heard asked yesterday evening, why did we, I mean, you, you approached the town, Wells Fargo did, this is what we'd like to do for you.
Correct.
Um, why do transactions like this not customarily come under RFQs, RFPs?
Some of them do, um, I would say that, and this is just my experience, um, which I think is pretty consistent. I, I would say that, um, two-thirds of the transactions, uh, my firm, or I particularly get involved in, are not through such a process, they're either, um, a client that we've had for years and years, like the city of Greensboro, that we've probably done twenty-five issues for, for the last twenty years, give or take, where we've just built that type of trust and relationship. The second type, I would say, which is the category here, is, um, that part of what we do, um, and a lot of times, it doesn't pay off or bear fruit, is go out and search the, the records and find out where there's a chance for an issuer to do a refinancing like this and save some money. So, we spend a lot of time, uh, looking at that across the state, and when we find one and run the numbers and make sure we're good, we then, you know, call a meeting with them, if we can get it, which is exactly what we did here, kinda walk them through the process, you know, give them our credentials, which we did, um, and then that just led to where we are today. So, it's by no means, once again, just in my experience, is the, the process here different than, than a lot of the other places we work. Um, in fact, I'd say it's pretty, pretty, pretty common. Um, and, and the reason why I, I think it's kind of worked that way over the last several years is it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of good for all, I mean, I think you all would like to have banks coming to you with proposals to help you save money, and we like to do that, but we're, we're, we're inclined to do that if it, if it kind of leads to a mutual, um, you know, relationship. But if it's just never gonna lead to anything, then maybe we don't do it as diligently. But, um, that's just frankly, the, so, um, that's what, what happened here. We saw the opportunity, ran the numbers, you know, called you up and said, hey, we think this is a good idea.
Couple of things to give the council some comfort, uh, you could approve the order, um, upon the agreement of the attorney, the town manager, and the finance officer.
It works for me.
If you guys on the eighteenth, all three of you would have to be available to say, go for it. Um, and then also, in the interim-
Well, I thought he's mentioned that we, he wanted some, a few days before then.
Well, not at the, not as long as there's not board action involved, because he can call us on the phone, and we could do that, he was only, if they're required to, I can help.
That's just basically putting in words exactly what the practice is anyway. We're, I mean, if, if you raise your hand on the seventeenth and say, something's wrong, we, we, we're not gonna sell them, or if, you know, that's the practice anyway, so if that's, you know.
We make this motion tonight and add to it what she just said.
Uh-huh.
What we've done is put in, to give you the, 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 the go-ahead to start the process, but still, on the eighteenth, the morning of the eighteenth, you would talk with these three men and say, is everything still on go? And they said, yeah, go, then you'd take off, right? You've already done your homework, you know who you're gonna sell them to already, right? It's just a matter of consummating the deal.
Right, and certainly, between now and then, questions, concerns, we're, we're here.
And in the interim, if any council member, uh, came up with a problem, a question, or something that was extreme enough that you would want to call the council back together, we can have an emergency meeting with six hours of notice. And if any council member came to me and said, I gotta, you know, we gotta stop this, or we gotta get some more information on this, I would be more than willing to call an emergency meeting.
Mayor, I have, I have a motion.
Please.
Make a motion to approve the order authorizing the issuance and sale of the town of Oak Island not to exceed forty-seven billion dollar enterprise system revenue refunding bond, series two fifteen, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection therewith, the escrow deposit in agreement with the fourth supplemental trust agreement as presented with the approval of the town manager, the finance director, and the town attorney.
Second motion.
Well, well, for you a second, I'm sorry, can we add to your motion with the amendments as suggested by the town attorney?
Well, we just did.
I, I thought I did, but-
What, what Mr. Scott said is broad enough to encompass what I was-
Okay, all right, okay, I'm sorry, all right, and, okay, motion by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Medley. Any further questions, discussions, Counsel Winkoff?
I would still like the numbers sent to us, so we can look at them.
Yes, please, yeah.
Send you the numbers, as well as the local government commission agenda.
Yes.
Please.
And if those, if the public has questions, please send them to us, and who can we forward those questions to?
To me.
Okay, and how do we do that?
Uh, I left my card there, I've, I've got a couple more.
Okay. Leave us some cards.
I would say just give them to David and myself, and then David can give them.
Okay, all right.
Here.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think it should be collected by someone here, and then-
Okay.
David Hatton and myself, and we'll take care of it.
At least, so that was three, four people saying at the same time, send them to David. Okay, anything else? Uh, all those in favor, please, and it is unanimous. Thank you, did you come all the way down from Charlotte, Robert?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for doing that on such short notice. And I'm hearing a lot, it's eight-thirty, we have been in session again over an hour on this, and I'm hearing a lot of, uh, from the council, this has been intense, so let's take a ten-minute break. Okay, we will call the meeting back to order, um, I believe Counselor Painter needed to add something to the agenda during the agenda discussion, so she needs to make a motion to suspend the rules and get a vote on that, so she can add this, please.
Please. I move to suspend the rules, uh, to allow us to adjust the agenda one more time.
A motion to suspend the rules to allow an amendment to the agenda, second, please.
Second.
Second by Counselor Winkoff, is everybody okay with that? Is it unanimous, okay, please.
Madam Mayor, we need to add to the, in the, uh, to the end of the meeting, a closed session to discuss potential litigation.
And that is?
One forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A three.
Well done.
Okay. Now, we will have, we will have another motion to approve the agenda as just amended.
Madam Mayor.
Please.
I move to approve the agenda as just amended.
Second by Counselor Winkoff, everybody in favor, please, and it is unanimous, okay. Now, next, we go into our regular meeting, chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Counselor Painter, and we have a second by Counselor Scott, all those in favor, please, and it is unanimous. Uh, next, we have, uh, committee appointments, we have, uh, two applications for the capital improvement committee, there are two terms ending June twenty-eighteen. Uh, first, we have Charles Robert Lloyd, I think most of us know him as Bob Lloyd, all those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous, and next, we have Darrell Vickers, unanimous. Uh, next is the community center advisory board, there's one unexpired term ending October twenty-sixteen, we have Maxine Cox, and, everybody raise their hands, okay, it is unanimous? Y'all hold them up long enough for me to look both ways. Uh, emergency services advisory board, two terms ending June one eighteen, we have one application from Ed Hardy, all those in favor, is unanimous. Uh, next, we have the environmental advisory board, three terms ending June twenty-eighteen, I think Lee is already serving on that, we have an application by Lee Bootsen, please, and it is unanimous, and then we added an application from Les Reich, uh, on the beach preservation, uh, trust fund advisory board for a term ending in September of twenty-fifteen, all those in favor, please, and it is unanimous. Okay, next, um, committee reports, Roseanne.
You dropped something.
Yeah, yeah.
Roseanne Fortner, one thirteen Polis Circle for the Beach Preservation Trust Fund Advisory Board. First of all, thank you to council for approving our new board member, even for a very short time. Somewhere is really busy for us, and with his addition and the return of a member who's on leave, we'll be back to a full complement of ten board members. We always welcome other volunteer, um, individuals as well. So, we invite you to see us and support us during the kinds of things that are gonna happen between now and the next council meeting, you will see us everywhere this summer. And some of the places that we'll be in that next month will be at the farmer's market, June fifteenth and July sixth. We are hosting a North Carolina Aquarium program at the Recreation Center on June sixteenth at two P.M. That is a family program, um, and the topic for this month is our living seashells. There will be, um, programs in July and August as well. Also, we hope to see you at Beach Day, that exciting and cutthroat cornhole tournament is hosted by Beach Preservation. In the meantime, with these events, you, we invite you to talk with us about what is the Beach Preservation Trust Fund Advisory Board, um, what do you all do, who do you belong to, and things like that, um, buy a tee-shirt, a beach bag, a garden flag, a license plate, all of those things give you something, but they also give the town something. Your purchases for logo gear on the Beach Lovers program, Beach Preservation's, um, or society's sales, all go into the Beach Preservation Trust Fund, so you win and the town wins for additional funds to serve the beach in preservation, restoration, and management projects for, um, the sand that we, we crave here.
Where can someone buy those items, please?
Um, some of them can be bought in the Recreation Center at the times that you're, we're not in one of our events, a few of them are sold downstairs at the reception desk, and others will have to get from us at, uh, well, you can order them from the web as well, there's a place to, to click on the web.
What is your website?
Um, it is under, um, where is it, Lisa, it's-
Um, you can find it on, um, under the town hall section of the website, if you go on boards and committees, there's a link to the Beach Preservation pages.
Oh, so there's a link there, okay.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's see, we also encourage you to renew your membership, and that is a tax deductible contribution to the trust fund as well. So, while we're at it, let's remember the rules that keep our beach safe for people and other animals, and, um, keep the dunes safe, so that we can preserve what we've got. We hope that you will remind everyone who's visiting with you, and also observe yourself these rules. Remember that this summer, there is a rule that no glass containers can be, um, in, on the beach or in the accesses, that's a safety issue, and so far, the ambassadors are seeing that glass container issue as one of the ones that's, has the least compliance. It's just gonna take a while for people to catch on, that they need to bring containers of other kinds, um, to the beach, rather than glass.
Excuse me, Roseanne.
Yes.
You just said that it is a tax deductible contribution?
If your, your membership is entirely tax deductible, because it goes into the town, which is a five-oh-one C one.
Okay, okay. Uh, how much is the membership annually?
Membership may be purchased at several different levels, these brochures tell about our mission, and, uh, there are several on the table over here, it's as low as five dollars for a student at any level. Um, it could be a, an individual for fifteen dollars, a family of any size for twenty-five dollars, and then several layers up from that. We have several life members at the five hundred and one thousand dollar levels as well. So, um, whatever you give to us is your tax deductible contribution. Good question, thank you, Mrs. Painter. Okay, um, finally, to town staff, the Beach Preservation Society has agreed to include in our annual budget request, a salary line for the part-time employee who manages the Oak Island Beach Ambassadors Program. It is not the role of the Beach Preservation Society to manage that ambassadors program, however. The beach ambassadors need a town advocate, a point person, a departmental home. We expect that department will continue to be public works, and we hope to establish an agreement with whoever becomes the new department head, so that it's completely understood about the role of the ambassadors and their support within the town. We support the funds that, um, created the ambassadors program, which council, um, determined to create, and that needs to be the level of our contributions. Several of us volunteer in both organizations, um, but the buck needs to stop with the town for the ambassadors program, please. There's a lot of learning that comes with all of this, isn't there? We expect to continue our contribution to the Beach Preservation Trust Fund through all of the kinds of things we do with fundraising, sales, and memberships. Um, we also hope to engender some learning experiences for families and individuals during the summer, and we invite you to be a part of that. Thank you for your continued support of Beach Preservation and the trust fund.
Thank you, Roseanne. Yeah, let's give her a, she does this every month, thank you. Um, is there anyone else or representative of the committee that would like to do a report, please? If not, we'll go to administrative reports, Mr. Holloman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, you've already heard about Preserve tonight, so I won't, uh, review that again. Uh, one thing the board may want to consider in the July meeting, um, I know you're talking later on tonight about the Brunswick Beaches Consortium, you may want to consider talking about a shoreline protection committee here for the town, uh, to look at issues locally, especially the funding issues you've been discussing lately over this next year, you know, issues maybe like paid parking and how that would factor into funding, as well as county and state funding, so, uh, some, uh, council members have mentioned that to me, so we'll try to come back with maybe a draft we could look at in July and see if that's the way you might want to, uh, proceed. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Um, can you address for me, please, I've had a lot, um, the damage that Anna did in creating all those escarpments from fifty-eighth all the way down, uh, to, what, twenty-fifth or something? I mean, there's, there's sometimes four, five, six feet down the beach from the dunes.
We've had a lot of comments, uh, comments and complaints about that, uh, the main thing we've working on of public beach access is, we've, uh, last week, the, George and his crew redid the one at the Cabana, uh, and make it a little bit more accessible. People are wanting things to happen, but there's not much more we can do at this time, no beach pushes, uh, or anything else, uh, so it's kind of like nature taking its course at this present time, we are telling that the board is looking into the long-term beach plan, um, and so that's kind of where we're at. And we did have, uh, George checking that access, there was a complaint about a handicap or someone who was shoveling his own access, so we're working on trying to get that fixed.
Is there any, uh, any true to the rumor that the town may be determining whether we should move the handicapped accesses, um, to other accesses?
There's been no discussion at this time about moving handicap accesses, um, now, I talked, did talk to George this week, uh, you know, typically, these sand walkovers, uh, you know, to really have a true handicap access, you have to have a structure.
Yeah.
And so, that may be something the shoreline protection group would talk about as well, so, of course, that creates another maintenance item, but, uh, we probably do need to space those out of the beach, so George and I have talked about it a very small amount, uh, but we'll come back with a report for the board or anything.
Okay. Any other questions that I had, okay, next, town attorney, Mr. Eas, please.
No report.
No report, uh, next, we go in the old business section, the discussion of the Brunswick Beaches Consortium inter-local agreement, Counselor Painter, please.
All right, um, we've discussed this at our last meeting, and we made some changes to the suggested changes to the draft inter-local agreement that, uh, of, that was going to re, uh, you know, renew, uh, the Brunswick Beaches Consortium, perhaps under a different name. We decided that we wanted to continue participation in the Brun, in the group, and that, uh, we thought it was probably a good idea to have a new name, and that wasn't settled as to what that name would be. But, um, the chair of the group, uh, Mayor Debbie Smith from Ocean Isle Beach contacted me and said that, uh, some other members of the group had- and said that some other members of the group had contacted her about the possibility of just operating on an informal basis without an agreement. And so, she was asking for input from all the members. I did not say during my report, a report that we will be meeting next week, June eighteenth, at the county complex. So, we'll make, we'll make a determination then on, it's at, it's at ten A.M. It's conflicts with our planning board meeting, unfortunately, but that's the way it is. So, I just need to know from this group, from our board, how you think of, what you think about that. And I'll just start out by, because I, a reporter from Star News called me and asked me and so the comments that I made, I said were strictly my own comments, had not had a chance to put it before our board. And so, I said that I felt that operating without a name, without a formal, I mean, I, you know, the, the agreement can leave out financial business or whatever, however we end up with an agreement. I just feel like that it takes away from the strength of the group if it is, doesn't have a name and if it doesn't have a formal organization of some sort. And I know that Mr. Morrison tonight was mentioning that he thought that more involvement by the mayors, particularly with some, you know, some trips to Raleigh would be, would be helpful and that can certainly happen. I mean, the mayors are always invited to these meetings. So, I just leave that open if you want to comment or anybody think that it would be best to, to work without an agreement and without a name and just to say, we'll, we'll meet. I mean, they said we would go ahead and meet and we'd have minutes, but we wouldn't have an agreement and we wouldn't have a name and...
Just amend the agreement you've not, you've got, Brunswick Coastal Consortium, Brunswick Coastal Communities Association.
Agent, Alliance, I like Alliance.
Brunswick Coastal Communities Alliance. That suggests that the meeting is named.
Does anybody have any thoughts?
Is everybody in support of them meeting and trying to put together an amended agreement for all the municipalities to agree upon? I mean, we, we're under an agreement right now. What they want to do is amend that agreement and I think the amended agreement would include no financial agreements whatsoever.
I mean, we left in their language about, about financial.
But?
But we see no, no need for a budget at this time or any monies to be expended at this time.
The only thing you've got to deal with is if and when everything is settled and you need to close out that account with BB and T at a certain point. So, everybody in favor of them continuing to look at the agreement and suggest amendments to their respective boards?
Only question I've got is, is when all the dust settles, if there is some money found that's to be returned, if you change your name in your agreement, where would that money go? Would it come back to this group?
I think the existing agreement's silent on that, but I would presume, and we would certainly urge, that at the very least, there'd be a prorated refund based on the amount of contribution.
I'm good with what you...
I mean, we could litigate over that technically. I don't, and I'm not suggesting that, but I mean, I'm confident, as I understand the way it's comprised right now, that they will do the right thing with whatever money's
Everyone in agreement that Council Painter continued going to the meetings and discussing with them amendments?
Okay.
Okay.
Hearing no objection.
Go forward.
That's where, how it'll go with our vote, but who knows how the vote will come out.
Exactly. Okay, next, we go into the new business portion, the adoption of the fiscal twenty-fifteen, sixteen budget and budget ordinance. We have had the, the two public hearings on the budget. We had one on June the second and then the other one tonight. I believe every council member has the handout by the manager on the corrections that were made at the last meeting and he has the budget summary, budget ordinance, and general fund revenues. So, would anybody like to make a motion, please?
Madam Mayor.
Please.
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-fifteen, sixteen budget. And the fiscal year twenty-fifteen, sixteen budget and ordinance is presented, which includes an abnormal tax rate of twenty-seven point five cents per hundred of evaluation.
We have a motion, I have a second, by Council Scott. Any discussion by the council members, please?
I got one thing, well, a couple things, Madam Mayor. When we approved the buttwell, getting ready to approve the budget, the taxpayer, and I'll go back to this MAP study about the employees. Tax, taxpayers paid for this study to be done, to evaluate the employees, make market adjustments to put the employees at the rate they need to be at compared to towns. And I went back and read it and looked at it and nowhere in this MAP study does it say a COLA will be issued to adjust pay. Performance pay, it said upward movement within the established salary range for employee is not automatic, but rather based on specific performance-related criteria. We're giving somebody a one percent raise that's away from the MAP study, has nothing to do with the MAP study, it's what the town wants to do, so why did the taxpayers pay for a study if we're not going to implement it? So, I'm against the one percent COLA. It should be evaluation and I could bring up a reference where somebody got a raise that shouldn't have got a raise, but I won't. But if we're going to waste taxpayers' money, I will not vote for this budget.
I think, if my memory serves me correctly, when that MAP study was done and we came back to us and we discussed it the night the lady was here, didn't she say that she, that they don't typically include COLA increases in MAP studies? I thought she did.
They, typically, they're not included in the...
They typically are not included, yeah. I was, my memory says that she said that in that meeting that night. That's up to the individual town.
Any other discussion about any items on the budget, please?
If it's not approved in the budget, then who, who approves that? Or is it just not given out?
No, that, that doesn't happen without council approval in the budget. No. Doesn't happen.
We would ask for clarification. Would that mean that, no COLA at all? Or would that mean that the merit should be three percent instead of two and one? You know, we would ask for some clarification.
I would say three percent.
Well, right now, the motion is to approve the budget the way it's presented.
Right.
Okay, we could, if you would like, rescind the motion.
Let's, that's the motion, Madam Mayor, and then vote on the motion. If it fails, then we'll do something else.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion to approve the twenty-fifteen budget and budget ordinance. All those in favor, please? All those opposed? And the motion fails two to three with counselors Weincoff, Scott, and Kaiser dissenting. Counsel Weincoff?
No, we didn't dissent.
Would you like to make a motion, please? Pardon?
We didn't dissent. They, the two dissented.
No, they approved the motion of the budget. The three of you dissented. You did not approve the motion for the budget. So, I, I guess Counsel Weincoff wants to make a motion that we remove the COLA and amend the merit, but is there any other council members that want to make any more changes before we have a motion? No? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the COLA from the budget and adopt the MAP study as, as it was delivered to us with the possibility of up to a three percent raise.
Three percent merit?
Merit raise.
Well, we've already adopted the MAP study.
Right. But we're just going to follow it. We had to follow it.
Okay. To follow. So, your motion is to remove the one percent COLA from the budget?
I think it'd be a cleaner motion not to reference the MAP study. I understand that's...
Adopt the three percent.
To adopt it, yeah.
Three percent evaluation.
Remove, remove the one percent COLA and increase the merit increase in, as presented in the budget to three percent. Is that your motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, we have a motion by Counsel Weincoff.
Does that also include the tax rate setting?
Pardon?
Does that also include setting the tax rate?
Yeah. I mean, it's the same thing, I'm just adjusting the...
One of the...
Okay. And maintain, and...
Maintain the twenty-seven.
Retaining the current suggested tax rate of twenty-seven and a half cents per hundred. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Scott. Now, is there discussion on this from anyone, please? If not, chair will entertain a motion to approve the twenty-fifteen, sixteen budget and budget ordinance as amended by this current mo, no, we, this is to vote on removing the COLA and increasing merit to three percent. All those in favor, please?
No.
Pardon?
My, I'm sorry, my understanding was that this was to approve the budget ordinance amendment, the budget ordinance with that change.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, your motion is to approve the budget ordinance. Okay. All in favor, please? Then it is unanimous. Okay. Next is the adoption of the twenty-fifteen, sixteen fee schedule, which includes the utility fees and the sewer district fee and, to the general public, I'm sorry. We came into this sewer service, we came into this sewer debt four or five years ago, six million dollars deficit in that fund. Council had to do something or we were going to violate our bond covenants again. We violated them in twenty-ten. So, that's when they called in Doug Carter with Dex Associates, who's going to be the fiduciary on these bonds, and suggested how to do these rates. They are, if they don't raise the sewer all utility rates by eleven point seven five percent this year, we will more than likely violate our bond covenants and you don't want that to happen because they'll come in and they'll raise your fees instead of allowing to borrow money from other funds and put it back in there. So, that's my two cents on this fee schedule. I'm sorry we have to do it.
And there will not be a debate?
Pardon?
If the LGC had to do that?
Oh, 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 no. No, no, no. You don't want us to viol, to violate this bond covenants. That would be very nasty. Anybody else got any, has anybody got any amendments to the fee schedule as presented in the packet? If not, have a motion to adopt the fee schedule, please?
Motion to adopt the fee schedule as presented in our packet.
We have a motion by Counsel Weincoff. Do I have a second? Second by Counsel Medlin. Anyone have any discussions?
I would just like to say that I hope that in the not-too-distant future, we can move to a more rational rate structure for our water and sewer. And I feel very bad that we haven't done so up to now and, but I think we've been not, not able to despite some other thoughts to the contrary.
And I, I know for sure it's not been, it's, we haven't been able to. Please?
When you say rational, you, you, you're not saying that the existing one's not based in reason. You're saying it's something that's easier on the tax rate.
No, I, what I mean is that a fee schedule, I mean, the fees based economically rational in that they would be more in line with...
Other cities.
The, the type of, the type of rate would be related to the thing that it's recovering.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make it clear that there is a reason why the fee has been set.
Absolutely.
And, and our software will not handle it. Our finance officer is very experienced in utility rates, utility schedules. So, when we get this new software and we're running right along with it, that's going to be his next priority, is working with the collections and trying to fix this sewer fees, fix their utility fee schedules.
Rational is just a buzzword in constitutional ordinance law, so...
The fees are set so that we can collect the fees and the usage so that we don't not bother. And I told Steve Foster for several years, I'd love to be able to tell the public why we're charging them, what we're charging them, other than we need the money. We have to. All right. All those in favor, please? And it is unanimous. Next, consideration of proposed amendments to section twenty-four sixty-eight, burning of solid waste prohibited in all areas within the town limits. We have our fire chief, Chris Anselmo, that's going to introduce this to us.
Excuse me, good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. I submitted the town ordinance, section twenty-four sixty-eight, to our town attorney to review some changes that I have recommended. Mr. Brian Eads has reviewed the ordinance and there are nine items in this ordinance and in items one through eight, Mr. Eads made some recommended changes, most of them grammatical and, and a couple of high points to those changes are, in item number three, where it has fires used in conjunction with a building site shall be used for the purpose of personal warmth only. We put a limit there as to a fifty-five gallon container for them to use. There was no limit there before, so they were able to burn as large as they wanted to. Other, other than that, some other wording that we just changed within the ordinance and again notably in item number seven on the burn permits, that originally said that a fire department personnel can revoke the burn permit and we changed that so that it reads that all town of Oak Island Emergency Services personnel. So, that would include fire rescue police or code enforcement would also be able to revoke someone's burn permit due to the same conditions that were in there before. Could be high winds or just unsatisfactory, the way it's burning, you know, the way they're burning. The major change in that ordinance is the last item, number nine. That's really the reason for the change. And that item, number nine, is fire department training exercises. I know it's late, so I'll try to make it as brief as possible, but as you all know, we've done quite a number of live burns here recently in the last eighteen months. And although the training that we get from those live burns is, you can't put a price tag on that, the condo fires that we recently had is a testament to that training that we have done. That was a very successful fire fought by the fire department because these guys are well-trained and, and that, and because we have these live burn opportunities. However, we still have to be fiscally and financially responsible and these live burns do cost us, you know, a decent amount of money. And when I say that, I'll, I'll give you examples. The last few burns that we have done, the last several burns that we have done in the last eighteen months would cost the fire department roughly four to five thousand dollars. And that is overtime and food, water, the, you know, we have to get porta-johns out there, we have to, we have to get hay to burn and pallets and, you know, just the instructor fees and those are the types of things that we have to pay for. So, basically, what, what was happening in the past is, and I'll make the, you know, just for the ease of numbers, if, if a homeowner wanted us to burn their house, if it would cost them eight thousand dollars for them to demolition the house as it's standing, for instance, eight thousand dollars, it would generally cost them about a quarter of that for us to burn it down because they would pay about two thousand to clean the lot after we burned the house down. Then the fire department is spending the rest of that money as far as the overtime and all of the other things that we have to get in order to make that burn happen. So, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to keep it where it's still cost efficient for the homeowner to do so that we can burn the house, but also so that the burden is not on the taxpayers to pay all this overtime and, and for the instructor fees and so on. So, in this ordinance, in that item number nine, I've changed it to where the fire department would take control of the whole burn and the homeowner would be charged a fee of one half of what it would cost demolition the house. So, in other words, if it's, if it's eight thousand dollars, they would pay a fee of four thousand to the fire department to burn that house. Now, we're not going to make money, but we're not in this to make money. Most likely, it's still going to cost us more than what the homeowner is giving us, that fee, but it will still offset some of that cost that we're currently doing. But I'm trying to be fair between both the fire department and the town and the taxpayers and the homeowner. Because if it's going to cost the homeowner the same amount of money to demolition as it was to burn, then they're not going to, they'll, they'll have no reason, no incentive to burn or to give it to us to burn. So, that's basically the way the ordinance reads. I did, again, turn that over to, to Mr. Eads to review it and... I did again turn that over to, to Mr. Eads to review it and, and he has accepted that as written, is that correct?
Yes, that was, well, well done.
Okay. Um, would counsel like to make a motion or ask questions first, please?
I just, I've got one question. What about the fireplaces, grills and these things, they call them chimeneas or something people put outside, what about these?
They're, they're contained and, and, and there is nothing in the ordinance forbidding those. You know, they're, they're, they're controlled. What, what it basically deals with is just open burning.
Would anyone like to make a motion, please?
Madam Mayor?
Please?
I move to approve the revision of the town ordinance, Section 24-68, burning of solid waste prohibited in all areas within the town limits.
Second by Counsel Painter, second by Counsel Kaiser. All those in favor, please? And it is unanimous. Okay, uh, next, the order authorizing the, excuse me, a consideration of the contract with Brunswick County for Animal Control Services as presented in your packet and it's noted, we've already discussed this. This is the sheriff's office coming back with the completed contract. And Mr. Eads, have you reviewed this?
I have, I just have a couple of observations, Madam Mayor. Paragraph, it's on page 144 of the agenda packet. Paragraph nine, C, references a paragraph 10. I believe that is a typo and it should be referencing paragraph nine because there is no paragraph 10, at least not in the copy I have.
All right, you're on page 144?
Yes, ma'am. It's talking about the amount to be funded. Sub-paragraph C is the second one down at the top.
Oh.
So it talks about amount contained in paragraph 10. I think that's supposed to be amount contained in paragraph nine. Paragraph nine on page 145, it has those funds listed out. And secondly, um, I think that all three entities need to have a pre-audit certificate on it. I don't see one on here. Pre-audit certification on the back.
We don't see one on whom? The pre-audit certificate?
Yeah, there's not one on my copy. I mean, the sheriff needs to have one for the county.
Oh.
The county needs to have one for the, I mean, that's kind of redundant, but I'd like for all three entities to have a pre-audit.
So it's, uh, approval would be subject to the county, the sheriff, Brunswick County Sheriff's Office, Brunswick County and Town of Oak Island, including as an addendum to this.
I mean, they probably have a stamp these days. I mean, you know, there's statute, there's just county statute and a, and a municipal statute.
Okay.
But I would also suggest that change from paragraph 10 to paragraph nine, particularly because that deals with the funding and if it references a paragraph that doesn't exist, I mean, you could get in a situation, well, it's wide open.
So can you approve it as amended?
As amended, yes.
And you think that that one, I am on paragraph, referencing paragraph 10 instead of nine is just, that's not materially significant, we could still approve it and send it to the sheriff's office?
Yeah, I would make that change, yes.
I got a question for you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
In the motion where it says we're going, that the sheriff's office will provide dedicated animal services and then you get to the payment on nine, it says Oak Island will pay for salary benefits and training to the county. Does that make us liable since we're, we're stating we're paying their salary? Or should it be we're paying for the services?
Uh, well, the, I think the way it reads is that we're refunding the, uh, I mean, we technically, liability would be an issue, but the county would also have, they have a risk pool policy as well. But, you know, it's a very good point, Jeff, if you want to spell that out like a habit indemnity or hold harmless agreement. But here's the thing, you can call it whatever you want to call it, the way the law's going to look at it is if we are directing that person and, and since we're paying that person, you really can't get around it.
Right. But they're saying we're not going to have any directions towards that person, but we're, they're classified, we're paying their salary.
Right.
That's my concern.
Well, we're kind of calling them and tell them, um, we, we can certainly include it, I can't promise you that the courts would enforce it. The more control we have over, and we can call them an independent contractor, borrowed servant, whatever you want to call them, but the more control you have, the more likely you're liable for their actions. But that's a very good point and if you want to do, um, a, a, another section indemnification agreement that, that the county will hold the town harmless for the negligence, acts, and omissions of their employee. That takes two seconds.
I would think maybe the other section, but one thing to actually spell out salary benefits and training, then you're kind of making sure that in years out, that they're still using this money for salary benefits and training and they're not allocating it for some other purpose.
Yeah.
So I think that's good to have it spelled out in here and add the section you're asking for.
So I, so we have three changes, then we have paragraph four, C, changed to reference to paragraph 10 to paragraph nine, three pre-audit certificates. An additional, now we will make a paragraph 10 of indemnification, holding the town harmless for the acts and omissions of the county.
I would like to ask the board, that the board direct Brian to get with Moses High and get this worked out.
Okay.
I do have one other question. We're trying to get this so it's seamless July 1st. Is there any kind of interim mutual way we can operate so that this does?
If they pass it tonight, I can have that done tomorrow and forward it over. I don't know if they'll agree with it or not, but, uh, they should.
So we could pass what you talked about this evening, send it to them, and as long as they don't change anything on it?
Right.
It's done.
We, we may have to have, if it comes to a special hall meeting or some kind of thing, there may be something if...
Well, if they reject, then then the only thing I can see hanging it up is if they reject the indemnification agreement. And if they do, that's a substantive term and y'all might want to take another look at it. And Jeff, that's a very good point you bring up.
Okay. Um, Madam Clark, have you got enough on the record that the council member could say to adopt it as, with the amendments as suggested by the town attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
It hasn't been voted on yet.
Uh, motion?
It needs to be motion, but I have, I have the, what the amendments are.
Okay. Motion to adopt as amended by the attorney. Oh, it's county attorney. We have a county motion by...
Before we do that, uh...
Hold your motion.
Brian on page 144.
Yes, sir.
From the 5A. Read that paragraph and see if that doesn't cover what we just talked about.
Well?
I mean, it, it covers it in language, Mr. Medlin, but I've seen it before and, and employers in the private sector are sophisticated on this kind of stuff, so they have all this language trying to make them look like independent contractors. But if someone gets hurt and sues, the court's going to look at what actually happened. They don't care what the paperwork. I mean, it helps, but if they find, if the evidence says is that the town's paying them and directing them, they're going to find them to be an agent of the town and the town will be vicarious liable. But it does, I mean, it does address it in language, there's no question about that.
Since it's not an employee and we, we shall exercise no direct supervision of the person, no control over the manner in which they shall exercise the sheriff's obligation in disagreement.
You'll, you'll see this in a lot of contexts where, where sales forces are called independent contractors, but the parent contracting company tells them where to be, when to be there, dictates how much they make, has rules on how they can engage with potential customers. And the courts say, we realize your contract calls you independent contractor, but in the real world, you're an employee. I mean, I, what I'm saying, Mr. Medlin, is this language in here in and of itself is not going to be enough to insulate the town.
Okay. I didn't, I want to make sure. I'm good.
Okay. Now make your motion.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Okay. All right, you got it recorded. Okay, second, please?
Second.
By Counsel Painter, any further discussion, please? If not, all those in favor, please, and it is unanimous. Next, closed session, please?
Madam Mayor? Uh, I move, the council go into closed session to consult with the town attorney on a potential litigation pursuant to NCES 143-318.11A3.
Thank you. Uh, second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Weincoff. All those in favor, please, and it is unanimous. Everybody get up. Okay, we will call the meeting back to order. Council took no action during closed session. Kyle, that's major, okay. I would like to ask counsel, myself, if counsel would agree consensus to ask the town manager to look at all the areas in town and suggest areas that may need no parking signs in the right of way and there may be some signs that need to be taken away and let him bring a report back to council at the July meeting. Is that a consensus of council? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for offering to do that. Uh, Chair will entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
So moved by Counsel Scott. Counsel Kaiser seconds, all those in favor? Okay.